I'll ask all those newly elected town meeting members that haven't been sworn in to rise and be sworn in by our town clerk.
Also, anyone who was re-elected this past April, please stand. Anyone re-elected April and also newly elected April, please stand and we're going to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a town meeting member in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Milford and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts so help you God? Thank you.
The clerk will now read the warrant.
Good evening. This is the annual town meeting, May 22nd, 2017, in Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either Constable of the Town of Milford in said greeting, in the name of the Commonwealth fore-said, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, on the 22nd day of May, 2017 A.D., at 7:30 P.M., and then and there to act upon the following articles. Article 1.
Motion's been made and secondly, we dispense with the reading of the articles. Any voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense with the reading of the articles. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. The clerk will now read the officer's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Massachusetts, date March 22nd, 2017. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the Town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of this warrant in ten or more public places in Milford. Thomas O'Laughlin, Police Chief. Thank you.
Are there any resolutions to be presented? Chairman Kincaid.
Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Dominic Morti Jr., whereas Dominic Morti Jr. was for many years an elected member of the town meeting, whereas Dominic Morti Jr. served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family, excuse me, respectfully submitted, the Milford Board of Selectmen.
In accordance with the resolution, I ask the town meeting members to stand. A moment of silence. Memory of the passing of Dominic Morti Jr. Just a reminder to those newly elected town meeting members and the people who are not town meeting members that are sitting in the rear of the audience, any registered voter has a right to address the town meeting after being recognized by me. In order to be recognized, you should stand, raise your hand, and yell at me, Mr. Moderator, and hopefully you'll get recognition. What I try to do when we discuss an article is to, or a motion, is to allow, not recognize a person a second time before I've recognized anybody else that wishes to speak on the motion as presented. Just a little refresher, please make your comments, talk about the topic being discussed. Don't wander and speak about a previous topic. Make your comments to me, not to the town meeting or individual town meeting members. For example, do not say, "I have something to say to the town meeting," or "Mr. Smith, you said something as a town meeting member that I want to respond to." Instead, say something like, "Mr. Moderator, these are my thoughts on this article." You may attack a previous speaker's article, but do not attack a previous speaker. For example, do not say, "The previous speaker is dead wrong." Instead, say something like, "I disagree with the argument we just heard." And try to avoid referring to previous speakers by name. For example, try not to say, "I agree with Mr. Jones's argument." Instead, say something like, "I agree with the argument that we can afford this budget item." Since you make your comments to the moderator, you may not directly debate or ask questions of a previous speaker. For example, do not say, "Mr. Johnson, you say that we should make another exception to the zoning bylaw. I'm asking you, when do we draw the line and stop making exceptions?" Instead, say something like, "Mr. Moderator, we've heard the argument that we should make just one more exception to the zoning bylaw, but I say it's time to stop making exceptions." Again, let's be civil, let's listen to the arguments being presented and debate accordingly. Are there any committee reports to be presented?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I am pleased to report on the status of the Citizens for Milford's Town Meeting Improvement Initiative that is currently underway. As a reminder to you and for the benefit of the viewing audience, it's worth restating that the Town Meeting Improvement Initiative's objectives are: Make our town meeting a more pleasurable and informative experience, approve attendance, and incentivize more of our citizens to seek this important office and thereby assure the town meeting is preserved for future generations. To that end, a thirteen-member Town Meeting Working Group was formed consisting of three Citizens for Milford members, a town meeting member from each precinct, an at-large member, and a member of the Board of Selectmen. They are Peter Scandoni, Citizens for Milford, Chairman of the Working Group; Steve Tredell, Citizens for Milford; Kim Smith, Citizens for Milford; Moderator Mike Knofry, and Member at Large; Selectman William Buckley; Richard Heller from Precinct 1; Jose Costa from Precinct 2; John Harmon from Precinct 3; Mike Bontempo from Precinct 4; George Marino, Precinct 5; Paul Malnati, Precinct 6; myself, Precinct 7; and Mike Viscani from Precinct 8. The Working Group's first task was to develop a survey questionnaire for the town meeting members. It was completed on March 2nd and was distributed to all 248 town meeting members by email or by postal mail where an email address was not posted at the town clerk's office. All survey responses were anonymously returned to the survey consultant, Great Blue Research, by March 28th. On behalf of the Working Group, I want to extend a sincere appreciation and thanks to our town clerk, Amy Naves, for her assistance in this effort. What you have received by email or on your seat is a copy of the survey raw data. It does not contain the comments. The Working Group felt it was important for the town meeting members to get this part of the survey while it continues its efforts to evaluate the comments and together with further analysis of the raw data, identify areas for improvement. At the end of this process, a comprehensive survey report will be issued to the town meeting members. Now, we take a look at the overall survey results, and believe me, there is a lot of good news. First, the overall response was terrific. Of the 248 members who were sent the questionnaire, 192, or 77 percent responded. You know, typically, responses for this kind of survey are in the 35% to 45% range. What is most encouraging is that of the 192 respondents, 168 of you, or 88 percent, took the extra time to submit comments. Of special significance to the health of our town meeting is reflected in your response to question three, which asks, overall, how satisfied are you with the way the town meeting operates? The combined very satisfied and somewhat satisfied response was 80 percent. This very positive response makes it easier for the Working Group to focus on the areas that you indicated needed improvement. In summary, the Working Group thanks you for your outstanding participation in the survey. This long overdue self-examination of our town meeting has provided invaluable insight into this body's views over a wide range of topics and provides the basis for recommending improvements. Between now and this fall's town meeting, the Working Group's goal is to evaluate the comments with further analysis of the raw data, identify, prioritize, and make recommendation for, and make improvement recommendations for your consideration. Finally, the Working Group thanks you for your participation thus far, and we are looking forward to your continued input as we move through the process to the ultimate objective of implementing improvements. Thank you very much.
Are there any other committee reports?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Chris Moore, Chairman of the Finance Committee. This presentation is a very comprehensive presentation because we are going to spend about $100 million tonight. It is filled with a bunch of information, and it is going to take a little while to go through. I will try to be as quick as possible, but it is important, once again, that you get the information. This slide right here is a yearly slide that we put up, and we put it up actually every town meeting, about our basic philosophy as a FinCom. We really try to stick to these four points to reduce long-term debt without increasing operational budget by adding available funds to stabilization. We also try to plan for future capital expenses by adding available capital, funds to stabilization, excuse me. We have a commitment to reducing the tax rate, and we want to maintain operational budget control. Now, here's Article 4, which is where the predominance of the money is going to be spent tonight, and this is where all our budgets are. As you see here, we have a $98,954,326 budget to present to you tonight. That's a 3.8 percent increase over last year's budget. Now, some of the highlights on the increased budgets, and you'll notice that most of these are personnel-dominated departments, because that's where all our increases come from, especially the first two where you see with police and fire. You'll see that these increases of 6.2 and 4 percent, that is, like I said, contracts with our employees. The next one you'll see is waste collection. You'll notice that there's a large increase there of over 10 percent. That particular instance is that our contract has come up with our waste distributor, and the rates have gone up considerably. They've gone up over 10 percent. When looking at this with the Health Department, we talked it over, and if we went out to bid again instead of renewing our contract, we're looking at a possibility of a 14% to 15% increase. So we thought by renewing our current contract to 10%, even though it is significantly higher, it's still obviously a better move. The Parks Department, obviously, this is a large increase as well. We added another employee to the Parks Department. We have a lot of fields to maintain. We have the trail. We have a lot of area in this town that, at this point, I think we're just getting by on it. I don't think we're making the advances that we can. In the Parks Department, it felt that way, and they thought by adding another employee, we could really beautify our town and make parks the place, places that our kids would love to play and in the envy of other towns. The next department, the Highway Department, you'll see even a larger increase here, 9.7 percent. The Highway Department is looking to add two new employees to their department. Once again, another department that's really been short on help and really cannot get the work done effectively. You know, their water level's up to their eyes, and they can't really make advances. The addition of two employees will allow the Highway Department to get on all these projects that they've had on the back burner for quite a while and really help to advance the projects in town. The last department you hear is the school budget. You'll see that they have a 4.56 percent increase of their budget over last year. In that 4.5 percent increase, 2.4 of that is an increase on their general education spending, and a 2.16 of that increase is of the special education and the English language learners. I think all of you know that special education and English language learners is a very important part of our school, but it's also a mandated part. We can't do anything about this. The state mandates that we fund these projects, and as a finance committee, we thought that this was a good number. All of these numbers, I know that they're high, and I know that everyone says, "Look at these increases." These increases are an investment in our town. Our town is a better place because of these investments. Property values go up, our services are better, and that's why we thought that these increases were doable. As you see, several of the departments, we gave them a 2 percent directive. Obviously, as we said, with personnel services and contracts and unions, you can't always meet that. So many of the departments weren't, 22 of our departments were greater than 2 percent. Seventeen of our departments came in at higher than 2.5 percent, and 13 departments even came higher than that, even higher than 3 percent on their proposals. Some of the objectives that we have, we want to apply $3.2 million to taxpayer relief. We want to put $500,000 in our stabilization fund. We want to put $1.5 million toward capital purchases. We've done this consistently through the years because capital, obviously, is a big part of our town budget. And also, we want to pay off available debt whenever it's available. If you can save money by paying off the debt when you have the cash, it's a smart investment. It saves the town both in interest payments and it saves us on our operational budget on a year-to-year basis. Now, I know that this is small, and I have a couple slides where it brings it up closer, but this is our revenue and expenditures. As you see here, we're going to bring in about $106 million in revenue. This is projected. We still don't know what the state is going to do. We still don't know how much occupancy tax from the hotels we're going to get in excise. This is all projections, but this is our projection of about $106 million. And over here, you'll see the projected expenditures for the budget, you'll see is at $98 million. So, if everyone looks at the bottom and you see a minus, but they question, "Do we have a balanced budget?" Yes, we do. We're taking in 106 projected, and we're spending 98. So we're actually plus eight, plus nine. Over here, the other financing estimates I'm going to talk about in just a minute. A couple of the notes that I would like to talk about on the revenue and expenditures that are important. We had a retirement increase of 4.45 percent. Health insurance went up 6 percent. Obviously, that seems like a significant number, but if any of you were in the workforce or pay your insurance, you realize 6 percent is not a lot for insurance, so we got lucky on that. BVT, that went down 5 percent, and the reason that went down 5 percent is there were 12 less Milford students accepted into Valley Tech this year. State revenue, we projected it is an increase of 3.45 percent, but as I mentioned earlier, it hasn't been done by the state yet. It's gone through many levels, but it still has not been finalized, but this is what we're anticipating. And the second thing is we have assessments. We're having a choice out charge of $1.2 million. That's students from our town that go to other towns, that we are responsible for paying for their education. And a charter school, obviously, we've heard about charter schools quite a bit in the news with the election, and that charge is about $175,000. So as I mentioned, this is the different revenue sources. I'm not going to get into each one of them. Our expenditures, as I talked to you about, is about $98 million. And our other financing. You'll see that the goals that I talked about of the Finance Committee are labeled here. This is where our tax relief shows up that we hope to do in the fall, as well as any stabilization contributions. If we do what we hope to do, it looks like we're going to be short about $216,000. Now, everyone comes up to me and they says, "Well, how can you have a negative up there?" This is projected. If state aid is higher than we think it's going to be, this is not going to be a negative. If it's lower, possibly it could be a bigger negative, but we also don't have to do everything that we have up there. Maybe we don't do $3.2 million in levy relief. Maybe we do a little bit less. Once we know what our free cash position is in the fall, we'll adjust these projections, and we will make sure, obviously, that that zeros out. I want to talk to you about a couple of financial articles that we have on the town meeting tonight. Article 19, you're going to see an IDC consultant for $18,000. We had a favorable recommendation on this on the FinCom. This is a selectman article that would ask for a study by the, for the Industrial Commission, and it would help to see what we need to do in Milford to attract business. All of us know that attracting new business obviously means an increased revenue stream, which would obviously benefit the town. We also will see in Article 23, for $125,000, we're going to see for a construction consultant for the TIP program. We've been talking about this TIP project for, going on two and a half years now. It was scheduled for 2019, looks like we could get it done in 2018. And what this is, is construction from Water Street in Milford to the Hope Dale Line, most prominently the intersection of Route 140 and Route 16 at Milford Hospital. We've done land takings, we've already done engineering studies. In order to better make that intersection, I don't want to say traffic-free, but certainly a lot better, the introduction of left-turn lanes and that kind of stuff. Article 24, this is another one that people have come up to me quite a bit on this. It's $400,000 for funding for consultants for the acquisition of the water company. This does not mean we are buying the water company. That's the question that everyone comes up to me. What this is, is to finalize our legal proceedings to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and we're making sure that every T is crossed and every I is dotted, so that we are not getting involved in any situation of $63 million that we miss something. This $400,000 is to ensure that we don't miss anything. Once again, the approval of this does not mean we're going to acquire the water company. It just means that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that if we do it, we're doing it the right way. Article 37 is the purchase of Chromebooks for the school system in the amount of $385,000. The schools did originally ask for $590,000 on this article, and through cooperation with that committee, and I appreciate their work on this, they've reduced this to $385,000. What this $385,000 will do will be able to purchase Chromebooks for grades six through nine in the school system. What we found is that now we built this wonderful school up at Woodland, every kid has a Chromebook. He leaves fifth grade, what is he going to do in sixth grade? Is he going to go back to pen and paper again? It really would halt the education of our students to not have this. So the school system came with us, came to us with a proposal of the purchase of Chromebooks for grades six through nine, and we had a favorable recommendation on that. Article 40, to retire school bonds. We've done this over the, several of the last town meetings, and we're doing it again here. We have $315,000 in bond, bonds that we can pay off. This will signate, this will save us about $79,000 in interest. It also will take it off our operating budget in the debt services line, which will free up more money in the operational budget. Very good move. We're going to continue to do this as much as we can. The town treasurer's done a great job in presenting this to us, and it really is a good way to save the town money. If you have it, why not pay the bill off? Article 42, snow and ice. Didn't seem like we had a lot of snow this winter, but we did. $374,000 more than we allotted was, services were done, and we now, the bills come, and we have to pay this off. This is the funding schedule on how exactly we're going to pay for all the things I just talked about. You'll notice that a considerable amount of this is going to be done through our current free cash budget. That's the nice thing about having free cash, is we don't need to tax the taxpayers any more than we need to, and we're paying off quite a bit of this. You see, 1.5 million of it is being paid off with our current free cash balance. So, entering our special town meeting in October, this is where we stand. We would have a free cash balance of $300,000. We would have excess levy capacity of $4.5 million. We're hoping, as I mentioned earlier, to do a $500,000 stabilization contribution, as well as our capital projects. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we are hoping to do $1.5 million in capital. If the Chromebooks get passed tonight, that would be subtracted right off the 1.5 million. We would not do another $1.5 million in the fall. We would subtract that $385,000 off. And the reason that we're doing the Chromebooks in May versus doing them in October when we do our usual capital is, if we didn't do it in October, the kids wouldn't have the Chromebooks when they went back to school. So we made a special exception here, moved the capital up to May in order for those kids to be able to have those Chromebooks come September of their school year. And obviously, as I mentioned, that $3.2 million in taxpayer relief, we've been doing this consistently over the years to ease the burden of our taxpayers. As a finance committee, we do not believe that just because we have the money, you should spend it. Give the taxpayers their change, and that's what we're trying to do with that. So with that being all said and done, we would have an estimated levy capacity going into the special town meeting of about $2.5 million. We are in a very healthy position, and I hope we continue that. So, this will be, the first slide's always the same, and my last slide's always going to be the same. We need to continue to stay the course. Our financial conservative attitude, our dealing with free cash to pay off debt, it's really effective, and you can see it here. Thank you very much.
What is the pleasure of meeting? Article 1. Article 2.
Dennis Carroll, Precinct 6, Chairman of the Personnel Board. I move that the town vote to amend the Wage and Salary Schedule of the Wage and Salary Administration Plan by establishing new position level and salary levels as recommended by the Personnel Board for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, as follows.
Mr. Moderator, would you please read the details of the article? I'll add, the motion made in second, we waive the reading of the remainder of the article, if it's exactly as appears in the warrant that each town meeting member has. Is it, Mr. Carroll?
Yes, it is.
It is? Okay. All those in favor of waiving the reading manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Mr. Carroll.
Would you please vote favorably on this article? We believe it's fair and just rewards for the people that work in the salary and hourly positions for the Town of Milford. Thank you.
Is Finance Committee a recommendation?
Favorable.
Is any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 3. Mr. Moderator. Mr. King-Kate, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws as follows. Highway Surveyor.
Motion made in second, we waive the reading of the details of the motions if it is exactly as appears in the warrant.
It is.
It is. Is any voter care to be heard? Yes.
I just want to point out there's a mistake on the Finance Committee report, but not in the warrant.
The warrant is correct, which shows the Planning Board Chairman at 2,547. The dummy who typed this report, me, made a mistake and double-entered 2,285. The warrant is correct. The one item we found that's a mistake is it should read as the official warrant, 2,547, for the salary, or the stipend of the Planning Board Chairman.
So the motion is the Planning Board Chairman is $2,547?
It is correct in the real warrant. There's no corrections. It's just five.
There's no corrections, right. Okay. Any other voter care to be heard with the dispensing of the reading of the remainder of the motion? All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Mr. King-Kate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This year, the Board of Selectmen are recommending a 2% salary adjustment for the two full-time elected officials, the Town Clerk and 2% salary adjustment for the two full-time elected officials, the town clerk and the highway surveyor, and a 2% increase for all other elected officials. Thank you.
Is any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is, motion is carried. Article four, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Chris Moore, chairman of the finance committee. That the town receive the report of the finance committee and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any item separately, that if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report, and when it, and when this done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where the indicated in the report, the amount recommended in the finance committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall then consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking each of them up individually.
Motion's been made in second, that we receive the, that the town meeting receive the report of the finance committee, and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any item separately. That if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report, and when this is done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report, the amount recommended in the finance committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall then consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking up each item individually. I will now ask if any member wishes to remove any item from the finance committee report. Hearing no removal, then the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article five, Mr. Cole.
I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the financial year beginning July 1, 2017, in accordance with the provisions of general laws, chapter 44, section 4, and to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year, and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period less than one year in accordance with general laws, chapter 44, section 17.
Motion made in second, the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the financial year beginning July 1, 2017, in accordance with the provisions of general laws, chapter 44, section 4, and to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year, and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with general laws, chapter 44, section 17. Finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard? Chris?
Ladies and gentlemen, this article is one that is brought to you on an annual basis. It allows the treasurer to borrow money when the need arises in anticipation of revenue. I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, which requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. Whenever I take this voice vote, when we have a two-thirds, anyone has a right to vote against it. I just do it for the purpose of speeding up the meeting. Any voter, all those in favor of the motion as presented, manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article six.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to take charge of all legal proceedings for or against the town.
Motion made in second, the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to take charge of all legal proceedings for or against the town. Recommendation, finance committee?
Yes, favorable.
Any voter here to be heard? Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this is another reoccurring annual vote. It's very important that town meeting authorize the selectmen to take charge of all legal proceedings, and that that centralized authority be the selectman in our decision-making, in the decision-making of matters against the town. In all towns in the Commonwealth, the authority is by vote of town meeting bodies vested in the board of selectmen. Thank you very much.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seven, Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to expend from sums received by the town as fines for parking violations during fiscal year 2018. Such sum or sums of money are, as necessary, to pay the costs and expenses of collecting such fines and otherwise complying with provisions of section 28 of chapter 90 of the general laws during the said fiscal year.
Motion made in second, the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to expend from funds received by the town as fines for parking violations during fiscal year 2018. Such sum or sums of money as are necessary to pay the costs and expenses of collecting such fines and otherwise complying with the provisions of section 28 of chapter 90 of the general laws during said fiscal year. Recommendation, the finance committee?
It's favorable.
Any voter here to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, this is another reoccurring annual vote, which in this case will authorize the funds received for parking violations to pay the cost of the collection of the parking fees and otherwise support the enforcement of parking restrictions, including handicapped restrictions across the town. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer and/or tax collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for the fiscal year 2018 pursuant to chapter 44, section 53F of the general laws.
Motion made in second, the town vote to authorize the town treasurer and/or tax collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2018 pursuant to chapter 44, section 53F of the general laws. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Any voter here to be heard? Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, again, this is another reoccurring annual town meeting article, which authorizes the treasurer and tax collector to enter into compensating balances with local banks. Again, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nine, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote for fiscal year 2018 to authorize any and all departments to utilize, without further appropriation, any amounts received from insurance companies or other third parties as damages or payment for damage to any town-owned property for the purpose of repairing or replacing such property or as deemed appropriate by the board of selectmen, directly depositing such funds to the municipal building and property insurance fund established by vote under article 45 of the June 11, 1990 annual town meeting.
Motion made in second, the town vote for fiscal year 2018 to authorize any and all departments to utilize, without further appropriation, any amounts received from insurance companies or other third parties as damages or payments for damage to any town-owned property for the purpose of repairing and replacing such property or as deemed appropriate by the board of selectmen, directly depositing such funds to the municipal building and property insurance fund established by vote under article 45 of the June 11, 1990 annual town meeting. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
It's favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard? Mr. King Kate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a recurring annual vote, which is, in this case, will authorize departments to receive and utilize money from insurance companies or other third parties paid in compensation for damage caused to the town property, caused to town property directly for the purpose of repairing or replacing that property without further appropriation. Without this vote, amount, amounts recovered over $10,000 for damages to property would have to be paid into the general fund with the later appropriation by town meeting to effectuate repairs. This vote will allow departments to proceed smoothly and quickly to repair damaged property without further unnecessary costs to the town. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, selectman Walsh. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize all persons, boards, or agencies of the town otherwise authorized to contract for or on behalf of the town during fiscal year 2018, to enter in such contracts or agreements for up to five years, except in the case of contracts or agreements dealing with real estate, which may be, be for up to 10 years.
Motion made in second, the town vote to authorize all persons, boards, or agencies of the town otherwise authorized to contract for or on behalf of the town during fiscal year 2018 to enter into such contracts or agreements for up to five years, except in the case of contracts or agreements dealing with real estate, which may be for up to 10 years. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Any voter here to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
This is another reoccurring vote, and is made necessary by the provisions of the Uniform Procurement Act. By that act, unless there is a town meeting vote, all contracts are limited to the duration of three years. In Milford, like many town departments, frequently enter into contracts for up to five years, and then up to 10 years in the case of real estate leases. The ability to do this is important because contracts such as those for rentals of copy machines, vehicles, and the, and the like must of necessity by virtue of the industry be up to five years. Most leases, which have for real estate, are for up to 10 years, and the ability to have that term comes without the need to come back with a town meeting article. Makes matters much more efficient. Without this vote, the limitation on all such contracts would be three years, which could result in contracts disadvantages to the town. I ask for your favor.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 11.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer to accept deeds in lieu of foreclosure pursuant to chapter 60, section 77(c) of the Massachusetts general laws.
Motion made in second, the town vote to authorize the town treasurer to accept deeds in lieu of foreclosure pursuant to chapter 60, section 77(c) of the Massachusetts general laws. Finance committee recommendation?
It's favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard?
Ladies and gentlemen, this article is another that is presented annually for a town meeting vote. This article would allow the treasurer to expedite the foreclosure process by accepting a deed in lieu of foreclosure. This process has been proven to be efficient and cost-effective. Your support will be appreciated. Thank you.
Any voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, town councilman Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $7,348.85 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum being consistent with the funds raised from vending machines in the Milford School District to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for purposes of student activities not funded in the school department budget.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of $7,348.85 from the excess deficiency account, said sum being consistent with the funds raised from vending machines in the Milford School District to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for purposes of student activities not funded in the school department budget. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard? Town councilman Moody.
Ladies and gentlemen, this has become, as you know, a recurring annual article, and will be for a while. This is, as it states, the money that comes from the vending machines, which has always gone for the last 50 years or so for student activities, but it was realized several years ago that it takes an annual vote now to actually use that money. So the number that you see there is the amount that came from the school vending machine, which is then going to be used for student activity funds. So we urge your support.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, town councilman Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town by inserting a new article 38 as follows. Article 38, departmental revolving funds. One, purpose, this-
Motion made in second, that we waive the reading of the remainder of the article, a motion if it's exactly as appears in the copy that you have.
I, I think what he meant to say is the same, it was passed out on all the seats of the town meeting members.
Right.
It's on all the town meeting members' seats.
Every town meeting member has a, a copy of article 38. If not, let me know. Okay? Any discussion on the motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the article? All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Jerry?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, on the second page of what's on your, each of your seats is the kind of chart that you're used to seeing in past years, which sets the revolving accounts, the seven of them that we allow, sets the limitation on it as we've always done. The limitations in terms of spending limits on the far right are essentially the same as they were last year. What's new is that we're also enacting a bylaw through this because of part of the governor's new modernization act requires that we now have a bylaw governing revolving accounts, and this bylaw that is proposed here is, is drawn from the recommendations of the Department of Revenue. So now we'll have the bylaw in place. We won't have to return every year with the chart. It may be some years we won't have to vote it at all. It'll only be voted if we're going to remove from the listing or we're going to add to the listing, then we'll have to come back to this body. But again, by virtue of the modernization act, if we pass this bylaw, again, we may not have to address this each and every year. So we urge your support.
Any voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Just want to compliment, as I see the Boy Scouts leaving the auditorium, having watched the town meeting, it's not as exciting as probably the one we had back in 1925, but at least they're doing it and watching us in action, okay? Next out, article 14.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend article 26 of the general bylaws of the town entitled "Tax Payment as License, Etc. Condition" by adding the word "annually" within section one, the words "and periodically," and "further" in section one to strike the phrase "for not less than 12-month period."
Motion made in second, the town vote to amend article 26 of the general bylaws of the town entitled "Tax Payments as License, Etc. Condition" by adding after the word "annually" within section one, the words "and may periodically," and "further" in section one to strike the phrase "for not less than 12-month period." Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard? Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This provision was included in the governor's, Governor Baker's Modernization Act as intended to allow municipalities to mirror a good standing requirement for our licenser and, under their implementation, bylaw ordinance. This article would allow the town's general bylaws and the town to deny local licenses, permits to any taxpayer who has neglected or refused to pay local taxes, who has not filed in good faith application for abatement. Currently, the town must wait 12 months before they begin this process.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, town councilman Walsh. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of section 193 of chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016, allowing the town to reduce the statutory speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour on any and all town-owned roadways with thickly settled or business district.
Motion made in second, the town vote to accept the provisions of section 193 of chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016, allowing the town to reduce the statutory speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour on any and all town-owned roadways within a thickly settled or business district. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor. Sponsor? Sponsor?
Mr. Walsh. This article will allow the town to establish a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district on any way that is not a state highway. In the past, the town would need to petition and secure approval from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, which was usually denied. Passage of this article will eliminate the need to petition the DOT. This will allow the town to evaluate and establish speed limits that are proper in these zones. We ask for your support.
Any vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried.
Article sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to accept a provision of Section one ninety-four, Chapter two eighteen of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, allowing the town to reduce statutory speed limits from thirty to twenty in specified safety zones, I'm sorry, in safety zones on any of the town-owned roadways within a thickly settled or business district.
Motion made in second of the town vote to accept the provisions of Section one ninety-four of Chapter two eighteen of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, allowing the town to reduce the statutory speed limit from thirty miles per hour to twenty miles per hour in safety zones on any and all town-owned roadways within a thickly settled or business district. Finance Committee?
Refer to sponsor.
Sponsor. Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article by itself doesn't allow, doesn't change any of the speed limits. It simply allows the Board of Selectmen to make votes where we designate where a safety situation may exist. So the article allows for creation of special safety zones near but not on a state highway, and with the approval of MassDOT, if it is a state highway, such safety zones would have posted twenty mile-an-hour speed limits. Passage of the article would allow the town to create special safety zones and establish a proper speed limit to promote safety.
Any other vote that can be heard? Yes. Mr. Connelly. I think I saw your hand because I didn't hear your voice, but-
No, that's fine. I knew you could see me. Just for clarity, if you could just kind of stipulate what a safety area is intended? The article preceding this brought it to twenty-five, and again, in specific areas, but could you just give us a distinction in terms of what a safety area? I'm assuming perhaps you're referring to a school zone, but I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent, so if there was just some clarity to that, I'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Chief. Chief McGlaughlin.
The statute defines the safety zones as being parks and playgrounds, senior citizen housing and centers, hospitals or other medical facilities, high schools or higher education centers, and daycare facilities. And you can only go fifty feet on either side of those types of safety zones.
Any other vote that can be heard? Mr. Constantino.
If you live where I live, and I'm set back, you can hear the roar, and that limit should be cut down further, okay? Because there are people that cross there, there's children and everything. That thing should be cut down about fifteen miles an hour, because the strip is like from here to over there, to get to the top or the bottom. So I would recommend they cut that even further, okay? There's a lot of going on up there that you people don't see, and I'm there.
Any other vote that can be heard?
So a practical example of this is where Milford had twenty mile-an-hour speed limits near Town Park, and the state required us to remove those and place them back to thirty. With the Governor Baker's Modernization Act, he allowed local communities to set safety zones that made sense to them, since we were best to understand what the, what the specific circumstances were and what unique safety concerns a community might have. So there's an example, a practical example, of where we had twenty mile-an-hour speed limits at Town Park and the state had us remove those. So I just put it in perspective. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article seventeen.
Town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation amending the act establishing representative town meetings, being Chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three, as amended in the following fashion. Be it enacted, et cetera, Section one, Section three of Chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three, as amended, is further amended by inserting in the first sentence of Section three, after the words "town accountant," the words "town administrator" and "finance director." Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Motion made in second of the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation amending the act establishing representative town meetings, being Chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three, as amended in the following fashion. Be it enacted, et cetera, Section one, Section three of Chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three, as amended, is further amended by inserting in the first sentence of Section three, after the words "town accountant," the words "town administrator" and "finance director." Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage. Finance Committee recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor. Suckman Kincaid.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article will amend the special legislation and ensure that the town administrator and finance director are members-at-large at town meeting. Both positions play a prominent role in the preparation of town meeting, and at town meeting, this will enable them to be town meeting members. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, Town Council Walsh. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to seek proposal in accordance with the provisions of Chapter thirty-b, Section sixteen of the general laws, looking towards reuse through sale or lease of the former East Main Street School Building located at forty-five Main Street and shown on the assessor's sheet forty-one as Lot seven A, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and to execute any and all instruments as necessary to sell or lease such parcel and to set a minimum price for any sale.
Motion made in second of the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to seek proposals in accordance with the provisions of Chapter thirty-b, Section sixteen of the general laws, looking towards reuse through sale or lease of the former East Main Street School Building located at forty-five Main Street and shown on assessor's sheet forty-one as Lot seven A, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any, enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as necessary to sell or lease such parcel and to set a minimum price for any sale. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote that can be heard? Mr. Walsh.
As you know, the school committee has declared the former Middle School East Building as surplus property on July first, two thousand and seventeen. This building will be placed under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. The Middle School East Reuse Committee retained a consultant who issued a report on the best potential uses for this building. This article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to seek proposals in accordance with the provisions of Chapter thirty-b, Section sixteen of the general laws, towards the reuse through sale or lease of this building. It will further authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements necessary to sell or lease the building and to set a minimum price for any sale.
Any other vote that can be heard? Yes. Voter from Precinct Five.
Jamie Wheelock, Conifav, and I am referring to the FinCom's relatively brief summary of it, where it says, "We can move quickly." I hope that the selectmen and the citizens of Milford will take a tip from the folks in the commercial real estate business and realize that it's okay to sit on that property for a certain amount of time and not rush into coming up with quick solutions with how to deal with that property. I recognize Milford has a dreadful record of letting the other Catholic school building crumble and end up getting sold at Consigli for far too little money, so I'm not exactly saying we should neglect this building like that building was neglected, but we also don't need to rush into a solution about what to do with that building. I hope that the town of Milford can maintain that property, if not that building specifically, which I'm not overly sentimental towards, but the lot and the space there seems like a tremendous plus for the town, so I'm just saying, let's not get caught up in moving quickly, as was summarized in the FinCom's summary thing. It's okay to wait for the right deal.
Any other vote that can be heard?
Al Karia, Precinct Five. There may be some confusion. The quote, "We can move quickly," was meant to imply that once due diligence is done and proper research has been done, and we decide as a town what to do, then we can paper the deal quickly. It's not meant by any stretch of the imagination to say we should move quickly and short-circuit any due diligence. It's absolutely meant that we should do our due diligence properly, but once we've come to a conclusion, we shouldn't sit around for a year trying to figure out how to write papers. That's the quickly.
Any other vote that can be heard?
Greg Johnson, Precinct Three. My only concern about this, and since we don't have a good internet connection up here, does this allow the property of the adjacent lot, the basketball courts that get used by the youth center, to also be dispatched equally quickly? I don't know if that's part of this lot, since I can't confirm the actual assessor's lot right now, but I want to know if that basketball court is also on the table here instead of being reserved for the youth center.
Town Council Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The answer to the previous speaker's question is no, it's not included. This is just the school building and the lot upon which it sits.
Any of, excuse me, any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. This involves the potential sale of land that would require a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of eighteen thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized by the Milford Industrial Development Commission for consultant services to analyze the role and effects, effective, let me get this right. I'm going to try again. It's the first day with my new tongue, I'm sorry. Analyze the role and efficacy of the said commission and make appropriate, appropriate recommendations.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of eighteen thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized by the Milford Industrial Development Commission for consultant services to analyze the role and efficacy of said commission and make any appropriate recommendations. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote that can be heard? Suckman Buckley.
Thank you. I'll try to explain it better than I just read it. This article will appropriate funds to authorize the Board of Selectmen to hire a consultant to be utilized by the Milford Industrial Development Commission for consultant services to analyze the role and effectiveness of the commission and make appropriate recommendations. The consultant will compare Milford and surrounding communities and like communities and look at best practices within those communities. The goal of this committee would generate, would be to generate ideas and promote growth of businesses within the town of Milford. I urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Once I say, the question now comes upon the motion, I don't recognize anybody else, okay? You got to stand up, you got to yell at me. I apologize if I missed you. I didn't do it intentionally. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Or it's not carried unanimously. Motion is carried. Article twenty.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Section one oh eight p of Chapter forty-one of the general laws, which section provides for additional compensation for certain treasurers and/or tax collectors.
Motion made in second of the town vote to accept the provisions of Section one oh eight p of Chapter forty-one of the general laws, which section provides for additional compensation for certain treasurers and/or tax collectors. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Vote that can be heard. Mr. Kincaid.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article seeks to accept Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight p, to provide an additional compensation to any treasurer or tax collector who has completed the courses of study and training and has been awarded a certificate by the Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association as a certified municipal Massachusetts municipal collector or treasurer. The additional compensation to be received is ten percent of their annual compensation, but not more than one thousand dollars. This will encourage town employees to take and complete the necessary program to receive such a certificate. The town will benefit from having a more educated and experienced collector and/or treasurer. I ask for your support.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-one.
I move that the town vote to amend Section two point three, Use Regulation Schedule of the Zoning Bylaw related to residential animals, as noted herein.
You're going to read the rest of it? Use Regulation?
How would you propose that I do that?
Okay, I mean, just-
I'll move to waive the reading if it's the same as the warrant.
Okay. Motion made, second, we waive the reading of the remainder of the article, if it's exactly as appears in the warrant, is it, Mr. Connelly?
It is.
It is. Any vote that can be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Does the planning board have a report?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on May two, two thousand and seventeen, regarding the subject of Article twenty-one. At which time it voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article twenty-one is an application by the planning board to amend the zoning bylaw to prohibit residential animals within the RA General Residential Zoning District. The planning board recommends the adoption of Article twenty-one as printed in the warrant. Article twenty-one of the May twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen Annual Town Meeting Warrant is a planning board-sponsored zoning amendment related to residential animals. Article twenty-one seeks to prohibit residential animals within the RA General Residential Zoning District. Residential animals are currently defined in the zoning bylaw as the keeping of animals or fowl, as an accessory use to a single-family or two-family residence, and includes anything more than three dogs or three cats. Up to three dogs or three cats or any household pet which is normally kept within a dwelling unit is not considered residential animals. The RA zone is located in the older neighborhoods of town and is characterized by two-family and non-conforming multifamily homes on small lots. Given the density and compactness of the typical RA neighborhood, the planning board believes the keeping of animals beyond just household pets detracts from the quality of life within those tightly developed areas. Residential animals will still be allowed by special permit in other residential districts. The planning board urges you to adopt Article 21 as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Finance committee of recommendation?
Be heard a sponsor.
Be heard a sponsor. Any vote to be heard? Yes, the voter in Precinct 6. Seven.
Michael Soares, Precinct 7. This bylaw, if passed, would preclude any resident from the RA zone from applying for a special permit. I've heard that most lots in the RA zone are indeed small lots, but that means there are still some that are not small lots. So I think the special permit process is the appropriate process for residential animals in these zones, because there's going to be some lots, perhaps as large as one acre, and you're going to preclude them from even applying for the permission to have any residential animals whatsoever. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Yes.
Mr. Wheelock.
Mr. Moderator, I request that you look up before moving on so quickly, because in the previous thing, I definitely had a thing to say and was unable to say that, but I'll move on to this article specifically. I live at one Conifav. It's under a quarter of an acre. I maintained, my family maintained chickens there for six or seven years, including growing multiple generations of meat birds and rabbits also. We got along with our butters just fine, and it is totally possible to grow chickens, have chickens on a small lot. A quarter of an acre is small, but it worked out just fine. So the points that the other person was saying are valid. If there are individual lots within that whole area that are at least a quarter of an acre and up, it is relatively doable to have chickens without causing undue hardship to your neighbors. And I'm not going to support banning the chickens in that area.
Any other vote to be heard? Precinct 7 or 8 back there. Go ahead. Mr. Visconti, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for recognizing me. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti. I'm precinct member from Precinct 8. Ladies and gentlemen, Milford is not a farming town. We should be looking at ways to promote industry and business in our town, not to raise farming animals. At a recent planning board meeting, and I am not here on behalf of or speaking for our animal control officer, but I can tell you at that meeting, our animal control officer indicated that there was no way that she could control the explosion of chickens that would proliferate through Milford if we did not pass this article. She is currently in the process, and I don't mean at this very minute, but she's currently in the process of hunting down a rogue rooster that is terrorizing... Well, it's a very serious issue, folks. She also indicated that there is no way that she could control how many chickens an individual had, nor can the individual control that. Chickens escape. When you buy chicks, and believe me, I'm not an authority on chickens by any stretch of the imagination, but I do know when you buy chicks, you cannot sex them. So you don't know if you are getting a chicken or a rooster until your neighbors are woken up every morning to the crowing of a rooster. As you all know, you look forward to the annual harbinger of spring, and that is the red robin searching for worms in your front yard. If you allow chickens in this town, you'll be waking up to not robins, but the new harbinger of spring will be a flock of chickens fertilizing your front lawn and spreading disease to your family and friends. Recently, the Center for Disease Control issued a statement warning that they expect a severe influx of avian flu this year. This year, they expect it to be worse than ever for a couple of reasons. Number one, in past years, the avian flu could almost always only be contracted if you had direct contact with the chicken or with the chicken waste. They believe the virus...
For what purpose do you raise a point of honor? And who's raising it? Stand up. For what purpose are you raising a point of... He's talking about chickens.
Mr. Moderator, my statements speak directly to the merits of the article on the floor. May I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. This year, they are more concerned than in past years, because as I said, in past years, the belief was that avian flu could only be contracted by humans if they had direct contact with the chicken or with the chicken waste. The virus, the avian flu virus, this year is expected to continue its mutation so that it will spread very easily from human to human. And the Center for Disease Control is extremely concerned about that and a potential pandemic. They also indicated that the avian flu virus is a very deadly virus. To put it in perspective, look around your precinct members as you sit there. You have 30 members in your precinct. If the 30 members contract the avian flu virus, 20 of them will die. This is a very serious issue, and there is no way to control the spread of the virus once it infiltrates a community. Please, vote in favor of this restriction. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Buckley.
I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on exploding chickens or avian flu, but what I will say is I support Michael Soares in his attempt to still allow for some properties by special permit to raise animals other than cats and dogs. I don't think there's anything wrong with the experience of families having the opportunity to raise... I don't think there's anything wrong with certain properties under special permit having the opportunity to raise chickens or rabbits. So I would support the comments that we defeat this and allow for the next article to come up, which may address the questions and comments.
Any other vote to be heard? Yes, Mr. Cannelly again.
Ladies and gentlemen, the reality of this, obviously, there are some properties within the RA zone that are greater than 6,000 or 8,000 square feet, but there's also a lot of that property that is two, three, four, five family homes. The density, in correlation to your neighbors, is so significant that allowing multiple chickens does pose a health risk. Also, when it comes to chickens, presently, it's through special permit. But the reality of it is, there's a requirement through the state Department of Health that these chickens need to be registered. They need to be vaccinated yearly. Because of special permit, there's no trigger that connects the two, so regrettably, we in theory could all be at risk, because unfortunately, the dog officer has no idea of how many chickens there are in this town. And in theory, she cannot effectively do her job by ensuring the health and well-being of us as residents without making sure that these are properly vaccinated. Unfortunately, this isn't about taking away people's right to eat or have a science project for their children. The reality of it is that in this specific area, the RA only, this is not the most advisable district to allow chickens. Again, I urge you to support this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Burelli. A motion has been made in second to move the previous question. This is an attempt to shut off debate. It's not debatable and requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the previous question, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed to moving the previous question, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1. Precinct 1 reports 12 in favor, 6 opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2 reports 10 in favor, 8 opposed. Precinct 3. Precinct 3 reports 10 in favor, 8 opposed. Precinct 4. Precinct 4, 7 in favor, 7 opposed. Precinct 5. Precinct 5? Oh, I'm sorry. 15 in favor, 3 opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6, 14 in favor, 8 opposed. Precinct 7? Precinct 7, 10 in favor, 11 opposed. Precinct 8? Precinct 8, 16 in favor, 5 opposed. At large? Precinct, all right, large, 15 in favor, none opposed. 19, 56? I'm sorry. 109. 12, 10, 10, 7, 15, 14, 10, 16, and 15. Okay. 109, having voted in the affirmative, 56 in the negative, a total of 165 votes. The necessary two-thirds would be 111, so therefore, continue discussion on the original motion. Yes, way in the back there.
It's a long walk. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Is a new member? I'm a little confused why this is...
Please identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. As a new member, Brian Cole, Precinct 8. I'm a little confused why this is the year the meeting is in such a foul mood. What? I know, or at least from my understanding of the zoning bylaws, residential animals, which currently include chickens, can only be kept in this zone by special permit of the zoning board of appeals. If that's the case, I would like to know for context, how many permit requests have there been in the past year if there's been an explosion of those requests relative to previous years? Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Yes.
Chris LaValle, Precinct 4. I'd like to see special permits still permitted for this. I think perhaps a better planning of those permits that limits the number according to the size of the lot might be an appropriate thing here. But a couple of things you should know about keeping fowl. I grew up with 20 acres of woods behind my house, and a quarter of that was swampy. We didn't have a single summer where we didn't get eaten alive if we were outside, except for several summers where we had a pair of ducks. During those summers, every single insect that came into our yard got eaten. We had the greenest lawn in the neighborhood. We also had the greenest driveway in the neighborhood. But chickens eat an enormous number of mosquitoes and ticks. They're one of the two fowl that are best at eating ticks, and that reduces the need to poison our land to kill insects, and then, in doing so, also expose our kids, our other animals, to those poisons. As for an explosion of chickens, if you live anywhere near the town park and you look up, you're going to see at least six red-tailed hawks flying in the skies all the time. They're going to keep any explosion of chickens from happening. So that's not a big fear. And as for the concept that this shouldn't be a farming community, there's a lot of industrial-style farming that could be done in our community and probably should be, aquaponic farming, that type of thing, since we've eliminated most of the land farms. Communities should be able to grow enough food to sustain themselves and not depend on bringing food in from outside, because you never know what's going to happen. But having a regulation that says, "This is the number of chickens you can have based on the size of your land," and that you need a special permit in these zones, makes a lot more sense than an outright ban. So I urge you, please, leave us with the special permit. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? This voter in Precinct 3.
Stephanie Abyssla, Precinct 3. And I'm just getting a little confused. We're talking about residential animals, and according to the document, that seems to include cats and dogs as well, and we're focused on chickens, and I'm not sure what we're actually voting for now. Are we voting for chickens? Are we voting for residential animals? And I'd just like clarity on that. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Town Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, if I can clarify that last point, it's the wording of our bylaw that is at issue, and dogs, three dogs, up to three dogs, up to three cats, are not considered residential animals, so they're not governed by the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw has the broad category of residential animals, which will include most everything else, including chickens. So dogs, cats are not an issue, as long as you limit it to three. To answer a previous speaker's question, and the chairman of the zoning board can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think over the last couple of years, there have been three applications. One of them may have been in the RA district, and of those three, two were denied.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, to amend the zoning by... If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, to amend the zoning bylaw by the section 2.3, the Use Regulation Schedule of the zoning bylaw relating to residential animals, as noted herein, in accordance with the Use Regulation Schedule, the district and activities, as you have in your copy of the motion that was presented. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote, so all those in favor of the motion as presented by the planning board, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those, all those opposed to the motion as presented, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports ten in favor, eight opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two reports three in favor, thirteen opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three, six in favor, seventeen opposed. Precinct four? Precinct four, zero in favor, nineteen opposed. Precinct five? Precinct five? Precinct five, nine in favor, nine opposed. Precinct six? Precinct six, eight in favor, fifteen opposed. Precinct seven? Precinct seven, seven in favor, thirteen opposed. Precinct eight? Precinct eight, eleven in favor, eight opposed. At large? Five in favor, eight opposed. Fifty-nine having voted in the affirmative, one hundred and ten in the negative. The motion is defeated. Article twenty-two. Motion made that the town— oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We ready?
It's a very popular vote here.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town move to vote to amend the zoning bylaw by striking the last sentence of the definition of residential animals within section 4.1 of said bylaw and replacing that sentence with the following. Residential animals shall not include three dogs, three cats, four hens or chicks, or any household pet which is normally kept within a dwelling unit.
Motion made in second of the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by striking the last sentence of the definition of residential animals within section 4.1 of said bylaw and replacing that sentence with the following. Residential animals shall not include three dogs, three cats, four hens or chicks, or any household pet which is normally kept within a dwelling unit. Does the planning board have a recommendation? Let's hear it. Yes, before we continue with the motion.
This shouldn't take long. We know it's going to happen. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five. The Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on May second, twenty seventeen, regarding the subject of Article twenty-two, at which time it voted unanimously to make an unfavorable recommendation to town meeting. Article twenty-two is an application by petition by amending the zoning bylaw to seek, to alter, the definition of residential animals by adding chickens to the definition. The existing definition of residential animals is as follows. Animals or birds kept and maintained for the private use of the permanent residence of single-family or two-family residential properties upon the issuance of a special permit by the Board of Appeals after a specific finding that the keeping of such animals or fowl will not cause any discernible inconvenience or annoyance to abutters, and after a specific finding that the keeping of such animals or fowl is an accessory use to a single-family or two-family residence. Residential animals shall not include three dogs or three cats, or any household pet which is normally kept within the dwelling unit. The proposed amendment would add the words "four hens" or "chicks" to list in the last sentence of the definition. It would have the effect of short-circuiting the special permit process that requires a public hearing and a butter notification, since the longstanding practice has been to forward requests for the keeping of chickens to the zoning board of appeals for their approval. Also, the animal control officer has noted a number of concerns on this issue in a two fifteen seventeen memo to the town administrator, which the planning board took into consideration. Therefore, the planning board recommends Article twenty-two be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Michael Sores, precinct seven. So people often ask me why I'm presenting this article. I watched application after application to the zoning board get denied. And these are applications that cost over three hundred dollars just to apply. And I recall one of them being for over twenty chickens, and I understood why they denied that one, but two of the applicants requested four hens, and I can't for the life of me figure out why they were denied. So why would people want to have a small number of backyard hens? I have a list here. I'll try to be brief. Fresh eggs. Eggs that you buy at the store, many people don't know, they are typically thirty to ninety days old while they're— once they hit the shelves of the store. Your eggs would be organic eggs. Organic eggs are obviously more expensive at the store. Your eggs would be more nutritious, because you are feeding your hens a proper balanced diet and not just layer feed. You would know for a fact that your birds were cruelty-free. We recently passed a law in Massachusetts requiring that all hens be cruelty-free. They are great education for kids. They will learn about hens and the life cycle of a chicken, and where their food comes from. I'm always amazed by the amount of people who tell me, well, if you don't carry a rooster, how will they lay eggs? And it's because they didn't grow up with hens and know that hens will lay regardless of not having any roosters. You would get an abundance of all-natural free fertilizer and compost for your garden. They are— a former speaker spoke about pest control. They are great pest control. Beetles, slugs, ticks, grasshoppers, ants, termites, and many other insects. All a great source of protein for chickens, and it prevents you from putting very harsh chemicals on your lawn, saving you money and making it more safe for your pets and children. Food waste. Chickens love kitchen scraps. So leftover food doesn't go uneaten. You feed that to your chickens. They're good at weed control. They love things like dandelions, clovers, and hawkweed, and other weeds. They make great pets. Many owners keep their birds after their egg-laying days, and they keep them as pets into their old age. They have a positive environmental impact, because your food has fewer food miles, because they're not being trucked to the store, and then you're driving to the store to pick up your food. And there's a positive social impact. Curious neighbors, not having been exposed to chickens, want to find out more about chickens, they come knock on your door, they introduce themselves, they find out what you're doing in your backyard, and you get to know your neighbors. You get to build stronger communities, because you know each other. So I've heard some reasons why people don't want chickens. And this amendment was carefully crafted to try to address some of those items. The number-one issue I hear about is noise. This amendment would not allow roosters, not at all. Hens make very soft, peeping and clucking sounds, but are generally not loud enough to be heard by neighbors. And they are quiet at night and make far less noise than barking dogs. The smell. This is where the limit to the number of chickens comes in. By limiting to four hens, you are limiting the amount of droppings. The average dog creates two hundred and fifty pounds of droppings every year. The average chicken is forty-five pounds. That means that four hens would be less than the average dog. Not to mention that chicken compost is healthy for your garden, while dog and cat manure is not. I heard that chickens will bring in predators. A well-built coop will deter any predator if you build it securely across six sides. That's four walls, a floor, and a ceiling. I heard there'd be issues by roosters, because you can't sex them. You can sex them with about ninety-five percent accuracy. And many feed and agricultural supply stores offer a rooster exchange credit. So if you do get the occasional rooster, you can return them. There are also some farms that will rehome them. I heard that your chickens will escape from their pens or fenced-in areas. You can trim their flight feathers so they are flightless, and they will stay in a fenced yard. I've also heard that the state requires inspection of these chickens on an annual basis. So I looked up chapter one twenty-nine, it's section nineteen, and it requires an annual inspection of cattle, sheep, and swine, and other domestic animals, only if there is reason to believe there's a contagious disease. And lastly, again, the special permit costs nearly four hundred dollars to get approved for the permission to own twenty dollars' worth of chickens. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti. I'm a town meeting member from precinct eight. Assuming that you remembered the points I made on the last article, in the interest of time, I will not repeat all those points, but every one of them applies to this article. The only thing I would add is, you have heard previous speakers come to this podium and support raising chickens in Milford. Have you heard one of those speakers offer a cure for avian flu? Flu, excuse me? Of course not. Remember, death is on our doorstep if you approve this article. You can chuckle all you want, but this is a very, very serious issue. Death is on our doorstep if you approve this article. Please defeat this article. We have many diseases and sicknesses to worry about without willingly introducing another one to our town. Please defeat this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Following back of Mr. Cannelli.
My name's Caesar Camoli, precinct five. My neighbors have owned chickens for over thirty years. Across the street from me, I've been carrying bags of feed for the lady for thirty years. Never had a problem with them, never had a problem with the chickens. I think it's healthy. I think my grandchildren should be able to eat fresh eggs, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Following back there.
My name is Rosemary Nadelson from precinct eight. I would like to ask a question. If this article is passed, does it mean you can have up to four chickens without requiring a permit? Or am I misunderstanding it? I mean, we've had so many arguments about chickens. The last article, I'm not sure people really understood what it meant. I think people were confused. So am I correct? If this is passed, you can have dogs, cats, whatever, and up to four chickens without requiring a special permit? Is that correct?
Town Council Moody.
And the official answer is yes. This will allow up to four hens or chicks, the same as three dogs or three cats, without need for any special permit.
Any other vote to be heard? Yes, Mr. Consigli.
My name's David Consigli, chairman of the zoning board. Well, the chickens have finally arrived. Just so you know, the zoning board is not against chickens. We have the ultimate job to deal with you people as abutters and neighbors when a hearing comes in front of us. It is contentious, it is challenging, sometimes it's even threatening, because you have small children in a family that already have the chickens on the premises. Over the last three years, we've probably had three hearings. Some of those hearings, one of them, I can tell you, is way up on Reservoir Road. It was a one-acre site with a special permit request for about twenty or twenty-two chickens. The chickens apparently were found there, asked to be removed. In any event, that hearing became lengthy, argumentative, and long. The pen, or that location next to the abutter, when she looked out her front door, they looked out their front doors, they would be looking at the chicken coop and the hens. So you, as the residents of the town of Milford, will be the ones that showed up at these special permit hearings. Again, I don't think any zoning board member are against chickens. I think it's the procedure to allow the residents and the abutters to see who's coming in next door. That's all the special permit is for. When you get a five-thousand-square-foot lot down on Hayward Street, and your abutter is within thirty feet of your fence, and there's a giant chicken coop with fifteen or twenty chickens, and the waste that goes with it, and a rooster develops, because you can't tell when they're small, those are when things get contentious. Again, the chicken's already on the site prior to a special permit. You, the body of this town, will designate the next step of what we do with the chickens. Fresh eggs, wonderful. But remember, we as a zoning board, under the special permit process, listens to everyone. Then a decision is made. Whether we like our decision or not is sometimes to the benefit of the resident, not to the zoning board. So therefore, I leave that with your thinking today. Specifically, I would have liked to see maybe something in the RA zone that had a minimum of at least an eight thousand or a ten thousand square-foot lot, and continued down the road for the special permit for the benefit of all. However, that did not get approved. Again, I'll say it once again, we are not against chickens, but the mechanism of a special permit is for the abutters, the neighbors, so that you know what's going to be next door. Because things seem to migrate once certain aspects get approved. That's all I am indicating from here. So again, over the last three years, we've had three hearings. So again, over the last three years, we've had three hearings. Two were denied, one of them because of the location, the other one because of the tightness of the lot and the many chickens on that lot, along with the residents showing up very concerned about what was going next door. So with that, I want to thank you for your attention in this, and hopefully that clarified some of the aspects from the zoning board's side. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, obviously, we as the planning board accept the defeat of Article 21, the preceding article, but in doing so, I thought it was based on the premise that you, as the body, favored the special permit process. By allowing this article, you're taking that special permit process off the table. Honestly, I would still encourage you to vote unfavorable or against this article. I think it's a bit of a stretch to assume or to conclude that chickens should now be classified as a pet. Obviously, I know there's a great many of us that have dogs, cats, even birds. I don't know of many of us that have chickens that live in their house and consider it a pet. Again, I think the defeat of Article 21 solves the problem, and I think by taking the special permit process off the table, I think you're going to just create a larger problem that perhaps doesn't exist today. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Greg Johnson, Precinct 3. Just a point of clarification. It seems like we're not taking the special permitting off the table just if we go over five chickens. All the previous crazy scenarios we heard about, we're talking about more than a dozen chickens, every single one of them, both of them. So it's just a clarification. We can still have special permitting as long as we're talking about more than five chickens or four dogs or three, four cats, et cetera. Are we not?
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Chris LaValle, Precinct 4. I think that this amendment or this motion is imperfect, but $300 for a special permit to keep a couple of chickens, hens specifically, seems excessive. And the concept that you need a 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, or a larger acre, sorry, a square-foot lot, considerably more than a fifth of an acre at any rate is what we're hearing from the town, also seems excessive. If we defeat this, then we're not going to see any movement from the town to amend how much the fee costs or to come up with a reasonable alternative. Personally, I think the number of hens that you should be able to keep should be dependent on the size of your lot. And a fifth of an acre, two hens. Quarter acre, four. And so on. But $300 to keep a couple of chickens so you can have fresh eggs and a bug-free backyard is ridiculous. We've heard the town before talk about a number of different bylaws proposed by different town officials, such as our solar bylaw. And the comment we hear from the town is, well, we've got nothing in place now, we can fix it later. The same applies here. If we vote to allow people to keep up to four hens or chicks, we can fix that later. In fact, since it sounds like most of the town boards don't want this, I think they'll move quickly to fix this, and we'll see a lower fee structure and we'll see a sensible limit for the land. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Way in the back.
Motion made to move the previous question, which is an attempt to shut off debate, requires a two-thirds vote. It is not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question, rise and remain standing until counted by
All those opposed to moving the previous question, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1. Precinct 1 reports 14 in favor, 4 opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2, 16 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 3. 16 in favor, 6 opposed. Precinct 4. Precinct 4, 19 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 5. Precinct 5, 16 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6, 22 in favor, 1 opposed. Precinct 7. Precinct 7, 18 in favor, 3 opposed. Precinct 8. Precinct 8, 20 in favor, 0 opposed. At large?
13 in favor, none opposed.
At large, 13 in favor, none opposed. 154 having voted in the affirmative, 14 in the negative. The question has been moved, and the question now comes upon the motion as presented, that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by striking the last sentence of the definition of residential animals within Section 4.1 of said bylaw and replacing that sentence with the following: "Residential animals shall not include three dogs, three cats, four hens or chicks, or any household pet which is normally kept within a dwelling." All those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1. Precinct 1 reports 11 in favor, 7 opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2 reports 6 in favor, 9 opposed. Precinct 3. Precinct 3, 11 in favor, 11 opposed. Precinct 4. Precinct 4, 13 in favor, 6 opposed. Precinct 5. Precinct 5, 8 in favor, 8 opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6, 9 in favor, 13 opposed. Precinct 7. Precinct 7, 8 in favor, 13 opposed. Precinct 8. Precinct 8, 8 in favor, 12 opposed. At large? At large, 7 in favor, 4 opposed. 81 having voted in favor, 83 in opposition. The necessary two-thirds has not been acquired, therefore, the motion is defeated. Article 23.
Town meeting members, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $125,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for consulting services to complete the 100% engineering design drawings, plans, and specifications associated with the Route 16 Main Street rebuilding project from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line.
Motion made, second the town vote to transfer the sum of $125,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for consulting services to complete the 100% engineering design drawings, plans, and specifications associated with the Route 16 Main Street rebuilding project from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line. Finance committee, have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Scott?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I spoke about this last town meeting. The project involves resurfacing along Route 16 from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line. It's about a half a mile. The project also includes sidewalk reconstruction, handicap accessibility, and related work. The improvements to the intersection of Route 16 and Route 140, including upgraded signal equipment and roadway widening. The project has been determined to be eligible by Mass DOT for the federal aid highway funding and is slated to start 2019, possibly 2018. The total estimated cost of the project is $2.4 million. If approved, the funding will be used to complete 100% of the design and engineering. I ask for your approval.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Come to the podium, please. Come to the podium. Come to the podium if you wish to speak. We don't have questions from the precinct. I can't hear you. Get up, speak in front of the microphone, please. Good exercise. You're your age, my age.
I want to ask the Highway Survey. You're going to do that road, I understand, right? Did you go to look underneath that road before you, with all the pipes that are no good in Milford and around us? Then you'd have to dig it up again? Is that being smart? Huh?
Are you?
I don't think so. That's my point. I think it's very wrong to do any of that stuff. I grew up on the Harlow Street with, what's her name, with the Highway Survey before? Roddy Spironi. He would do more stuff than you could realize. Still, all the pipes are in the ground and no good. All right? So why spend money foolishly? You put it down and then you've got to go dig it up again. That's my point.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 25. 4, I'm sorry. Town Councilor Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $400,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized together with funds available under Article 16 of the October 21, 2013 special town meeting thereafter supplemented for purposes of retaining consultants and other expert services to evaluate and represent the town's interests in acquisition of the Milford Water Company and to effectuate any final agreement to transfer the Milford Water Company and its assets to the town of Milford.
Motion made, second the town vote to transfer the sum of $400,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized together with funds available under Article 16 of the October 21, 2013 special town meeting thereafter supplemented for purposes of retaining consultants and other expert services to evaluate and represent the town's interest in acquisition of the Milford Water Company and to effectuate any final agreement to transfer the Milford Water Company and its assets to the town of Milford. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation. Town Councilor Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I think you're probably all aware, after a long period of negotiations with the support of this body and the financial support, and then including the services of a highly qualified mediator who worked with the Board of Selectmen and its representatives and the Water Company, a tentative price was finally agreed upon of $63 million. This is not a vote tonight on whether or not to purchase the Water Company. This is a vote to go forward so the Board of Selectmen, through the experts that we've retained, can make absolutely sure that this is the right thing to do and get all of the information as to the system and to the financials, which is what we're in the process of doing and want to continue to do that. Hope of the Board of Selectmen is that we'll have a town meeting sometime in September where the real issue will be addressed, which will be whether or not to acquire the Water Company for the $63 million. And that requires a two-thirds vote of this body. That's part of the law from 1881, and that has to be done. This will allow us to take us up to that point and past that point if, in fact, you vote that night to acquire it, so that if, in fact, we go forward with the final acquisition, everything will be placed, we'll know exactly what we're getting. There's an enormous amount of what's referred to as due diligence that has been done and is going to continue to be done with these funds so that we'll know exactly what the system is and exactly what their financials are, and you'll know exactly what you have to vote on. The Selectmen, again, intend to hold several, or as many as needed, open forums for all citizens of the town to come and hear from all the experts in terms of what the financial aspects are and what the engineering aspects are and what the system is, what it consists of, and what it is that we'd be acquiring. There will be many, many questions, and those will all be answered before we even get to the town meeting. And obviously, all town meeting members will be encouraged to be there. But this $400,000 will allow us to go forward through that process, and again, if you then later vote to acquire the Water Company, then this should be enough to take us to a closing. So we strongly urge your support for this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Probably not a good sign when I bring the notebook. We have been dealing with the Water Company issue for approximately five years. We are the bill payers. All you guys there and the people back there watching us on television, we're the board of directors. We're the people that write the checks and pay the bills. We have been kept in absolute darkness about this entire Water Company purchase for five years, and my opinion deliberately. Now we're being asked for $400,000, well over a half a million dollars if you count the first expenditure. We have no interim report in five years, been provided with no information in five years, no idea of the status of the fact gathering, the engineering reports which are available, the appraisers' reports which are available, no idea of the results of the probe to determine whether we should even be discussing purchasing the Water Company. We're now being asked for $400,000 for due diligence. What due diligence? Why isn't it a reasonable question? What due diligence? All a veil of secrecy over purchasing the Water Company to the people who asked them to explore it. We simply have been told in negotiations, we can't discuss it with you. We can't tell you anything. What we know is, in the media, a price has been determined, but the people who fund the project, the purchase, have been told nothing from which the purchase price has been derived. Now we're the investors in private industry. If you asked a committee to explore a $60 million purchase, to investigate the purchase of a Water Company and after five years you've been told nothing, you had no interim report and no information and being asked to spend another $400,000. You read in the newspaper that the committee, our selectmen, negotiated a price but never told us anything. What would you do with that committee? You run a major corporation, you asked them to do and explore something, they give you no information, they want more money. What do you think you'd do with those people? And do you think that's how high-level executives operate in private industry? Keep the investors in the dock. I've heard we want to spend the $400,000 because of... the $400,000 because of a crisis. The word crisis was said about 25 times in getting the initial appropriation. We have to buy the Water Company because of a crisis. Do you know what the crisis is? The roof on the Congress Street tank rotted out. 12 people got sick. Nobody died. Do you think that's a crisis or just something that isn't nice? We want to buy the Water Company and spend $400,000 because we'll save a lot of money on your water bill. We all know that when the government gets involved, they always save us money. They always do it cheaper with less employees. No, the government always hires a lot more people.
I got to get you back on the topic of whether you want to appropriate the $400, you seem to be getting in the merits of whether we should have the Water Company or not.
That, I think.
And that's not part of this discussion. Do you want to spend $400,000 for further, to hire further consultants or retain consultants? That's the issue, not buying the Water Company.
Mr. Moderator, may I comment?
Well, I'll let you go a little further. Go ahead.
Okay. Government is always less efficient, less responsive to their customers. Ask the people in Detroit. They bought their Water Company. They proceeded to poison the water and kill the people of Detroit. You've seen it throughout the news. That's what happens when we go into private industry and try to take it over. So let's spend $400,000. The Selectmen say we can buy the Water Company because it's cheaper and we'll save a lot of money. And recently, somebody said, we're not going to save any money. The same person who told us we were going to save money now tell us we're not going to save any money, but it's still a good deal, and we should spend $400,000 to find out that it's a good deal. The expenses, the revenue of the Water Company are precisely known to us. They've been known to us from the very beginning. To spend $400,000 to study this seems ludicrous to me. The average water bill is $80. We can tell right now whether you're going to save 10% or you're going to save 50%. 10% of $80 at $8. 50% is $40. Can't we put on the table exactly where we are today to formulate a decision whether we want to save $8 and proceed forward or we don't before we spend $400,000? Perhaps the finance committee could share with us how they came to the same determination. They, again, have all of the revenue, all of the expenses, and they've advised us to spend $400,000. Couldn't somebody come up here and share the pros and the cons of proceeding before we spend that kind of money? I've heard the Selectmen say one of the few communities, we are one of the few communities that don't own our own Water Company, to imply that.
Person didn't say that on this floor today, so let's talk about the article before us.
So we should proceed to spend $400,000. Each year, the Water Company publishes the results of the state testing. Not their testing, the state of Massachusetts. We all get a little brochure in the mail that tells us that we have some of the best water in the entire Commonwealth. So let's buy the Water Company so we can make it better? Someone said we should buy the Water Company so we can control it. So we're going to spend $400,000 to study whether we should control the Water Company. If we produce the best water at a reasonable price, the most we can save is something like $8. Would you ever fall into acquiring the Water Company? I'm not an apologist for the Water Company, but I have nothing to base my determination as a town meeting member and a taxpayer on whether I should spend $400,000. I have no information, none. And it seems a shame that people should come before us, not ask for $40, but ask for $400,000 and tell us nothing about where their investigation has led them. We have all types of liabilities that have to be considered. The dams, the aqueducts, the pipes, the plant. I passed through Congress Street a few years ago. There was a 30-foot timber sticking out of the trench. I stopped and asked the construction supervisor, what the hell was a piece of timber doing in there? He said, those are the pipes we're replacing from the 1800s. They drilled down the center.
And I don't want to hear the merits of the Water Company. We're talking about, do you want to spend $400,000? Do you think it's worthwhile or not? I'm going to give you another minute to finish your point.
Thank you, sir.
Sixty seconds on the clock right now.
All right. I would ask somebody to come in here and convince me to spend $400,000 with some facts. In five years, nobody's done that. I'll give you multiple choice. I've only got a second left. We're going to buy the Water Company because we're going to create better water. We're going to do it much cheaper, or we're going to hire a lot of government employees. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Wheelock.
Try to remember to, you know, call Mr. Moderator. That'll help me a little bit as far as the eye is going, not seeing a hand raised. Hello, and I could just second what the previous speaker said because that contained most of the ideas that I've been having about this issue on the warrant tonight. It sure would be easier to support this article if all of us were better informed. As a compliment to the people involved, I could add that it's been an impressive job that Town Hall and the Water Company have done to control any leaks to the media, present of past or present employees who might be able to enlighten us in the media about possible issues, and remarkably little insightful information about the issue about the Water Company purchase. Mostly, I want to make sure that I say out loud, like the previous speaker did, that this feels problematic because I feel the Town Hall has done very little to inform the people of Milford of any meaningful information about the process and the details of this proposed purchase. I can't support this $400,000 because I don't know enough about it, and I'm claiming that Town Hall has done an inadequate job of informing me, in my opinion.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, or in precinct three.
Bob Callahan, precinct three. The reason I'm up here is I would like you to defeat this article. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. You asked, the Milford Water Company screwed up a few years ago, but I agree with the previous speaker saying that the water in Milford is from the finest, that it's delivered in a reasonable manner at a reasonable price. But even what my opinion really doesn't count, what it counts is the voters of this town have not ever had a chance to raise their hand and say yes or no. We had an article out there for a casino. We put it on the ballot. We talked about it. We had discussions about it. But here, we're going to spend $63 million. For what? If you ask the town administrator, as I did, I asked for the business plan, a copy of the business plan, on how we were going to purchase the Milford Water Company.
We're not talking about purchasing the Milford Water Company. We're talking about whether you want to spend $400,000 to hire consultants and other experts to evaluate and represent the town's interest. Okay? We're not talking about the eventual purchase. We're talking about spending more money for consultants. So please, and we're not talking about casinos.
Okay, $400,000 for a consultant, if we had a scope of services, may be a very reasonable offer. But I have never seen a scope of services. Has anybody in this room, any of our town meeting members who are now going to vote, ever seen a scope of services? Or are we going to just willy-nilly give up $400,000? There is many places in this town where we could better use that money right now. I believe that we need some mandates put forward and make sure that this is really what the town wants. Thank you.
Okay. Any other vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the moderator say this repeatedly. This is not about the acquisition of the Water Company. I have a lot of information about the Water Company, and if you ask me right now if we should buy the Water Company, I have no idea. I am very conservative with the town's money. We are on the 24th mile of the marathon to figure out whether we should purchase this or not. We need to follow through with this. $63 million is a significant investment, and one of our previous speakers used the word liability. That is exactly what the problem is. We need to know where the liabilities are, where the loose ends are. If someone fell down at the Water Company three years ago and hasn't put in their lawsuit, we acquire it, and now we have a $30 million personal claim on it. It's those types of things that need to be tied up. That is what this money does. It's to get you the answers to the questions that you want. There's 3,000 questions about what the acquisition of the Water Company means, both financially and service-wise. We don't have the answers to those questions. This $400,000 will get you the answers to those questions. That's what this is for. It's not about the Water Company. We may spend this $400,000 and realize we have no desire to do this, but we're on the 24th mile, finish the marathon.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Jose Costa, precinct two. As I sat and started listening to the conversation here, I looked back at when, as some speakers have stated about how long we've been discussing this. And originally, when we went and had hired lawyers to look at the issue of the rate increases we had, that was the first time we spent some money. And then after that, it came before us that because we had done all that research to fight that, we already had a lot of information. Let's spend, I forget what the amount was now. It could have been $150,000, $200,000 at that time, which was told to us would be sufficient to do the final analysis if we should buy or not. Seeing that now we have another $400,000 to look at this, it's just getting a little bit, in my opinion, too much right now. We probably, we should have information enough to present to residents, town meeting, to be able to at least take a look at where we are. And then if we, we decide that, you know, there definitely isn't answers to all the questions, then let's proceed at another time. But give us some information of where we are today so we can make an informed decision if we should spend the $400,000 or not. Right now, it's just, all we're doing is we're saying, you're saying you need it? Yeah, yeah, we'll give it to you. And I just don't think that's right. I'd vote, I'd vote against this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti, town meeting member from precinct eight. What concerns me is that we apparently, a price of sixty-odd million dollars to buy the Water Company has already been established. And what concerns me is that now we need $400,000 to see if we, if, if it's worthwhile to buy the Water Company. I'm curious as to how we came up with the, negotiated the sixty-odd million dollars, and now we need the $400,000 to find out if we, if we should. Seems to be the, that, that we're doing this back end, too. I would respectfully ask that you defeat this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Kincaid.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, obviously, I've only been on the board for two years. Mr. Walsh has just gotten on. I know we've been directed, we've signed documentation, and in the 17 years that I've held a position in this town, it's definitely been the most difficult to ask for your support and this body's support to keep moving on without being able to tell a whole bunch of information. It's incredibly awkward, and I understand the frustration. I actually understand most of the comments made by the previous speakers. And the right decision will be made because this body, in my lifetime anyway, always makes the right decision. So I respect whatever decisions made. But what I can say is, even Mike jumping on, just getting in, he came ready. Questions, we want answers. Before we even hold one of our several public forums, we want to be able to answer every question that you folks have. We have, in a lot of ways, put these folks through the wringer, including our consultants and attorneys, and the fact what Rick, Jerry, and the whole financial team is, is putting them through for hours and hours and hours at a time. It has to be an executive session, and we've even continuously talked about the fact that nothing has leaked out. These negotiations have been in completely good faith. And for a lot of you folks know, and I know, again, we're asking for another $400,000, but it's been amazing that these negotiations have been as confidential as they are. And that's how important that we're holding them, and we are constantly sending our team back for more answers to questions. It's a lot of money. I, I get it. But I know that we, as a board, aren't going to feel comfortable coming to this body looking for you to make a decision up or down when that time does come, if it comes. But we can't bring it before this board until all of our questions are answered, because that's not fair to you folks, and it's certainly not fair to us to present you something that we don't feel is time yet. We have moved the timeline because questions weren't answered, because people came onto the board with additional questions, good questions. We've been very demanding. It's been a lot of late nights, a lot of hours. That's not a complaint. We signed up for this. But we are taking it very, very seriously, and we're being told that if you do support the article and get us the $400,000, that we will be able to at least have all of the answers. A lot of people coming up and speaking against this, I mean, I know them. They're my friends, and I respect their opinions. But as Mr. Moran said, we're on the 24th mile. I mean, to, to stop now, I'm not sure that makes sense either. And I think that, I believe me, I wish you were in the negotiations with us because I think you'd be very pleased that we are, the demands that we are making, because we want to be able to present to this board as the law, as Jerry said, the law mandates. This body's going to make the final decision, but unfortunately or fortunately, the responsibility is on us to get you all of the information you need, and that's what this money will do. So I, I hope that you'll support this article, and we can have everything we need to present to this body to make a decision down the road. Thank you.
Any other vote to care? Mr. Buckley.
It seems we have a conundrum. We're in the middle of negotiations that we can't share with a body that needs more information before they vote. I understand that, and I respect that. It's a tough hurdle to get over. I would like nothing more than to open up the negotiations, to be a public meeting, to be taped. It's not the way the process works, unfortunately. I've not personally been involved in the acquisition of companies before, but I have been subject to acquisition. There's a great deal of moving parts and information that needs to be gathered before at least this board can take it forward. In the acquisition of a company, you have to deal with indemnifications. There are a lot of tax implications. There are a host of other issues that only accountants and lawyers can really work through and, and provide the information we're looking for. And while somebody might be able to value a piece of property, that doesn't mean that's all the costs associated with it. In the same, in the same way that somebody may be able to value the Archer Rubber facility. In the same, in the same way that somebody may be able to value the Archer Rubber facility, it would be negligent on my part if I didn't, if somebody had suggested that that value were $100,000, just to give a number, and I didn't have all the information associated with the property. We are working very, very hard to come up with it, and I respect the honest opinions of this body to say, why should we further investigate this if we don't know whether it's a good deal or not? This board is in an awkward position for that reason. I would tell you that this body funded a great deal over the years, and I don't have the exact number, I'm not sure if Jerry does, but to, to look into this, it's not about a company, it's about water rights, it's about a whole host of things, but the funds that go into the consultants from this, this effort today that we're asking for serve to make sure that our liabilities aren't such, that there aren't hidden costs, so that we can come back with enough answers and tell you everything that we think you want to know and that people have been communicating to us. We are at the 12th hour. This is the last that I expect to ever come before this body associated with the water company. And I'd hope that you approve this to give us the last opportunity to answer your questions and to make sure through the tax process and through the attorneys that there's nothing out there that we haven't, no stone that we haven't lifted and no liability that we're not aware of. It's called indemnification. It addresses liabilities. I could talk to it for a couple of minutes, but I'm sure it wouldn't satisfy many, and I'm sure after three minutes, only the accountants would get it. This is, this is an interesting process for acquisition, and what I want to make sure is that this community has the opportunity to make a yea or nay vote, and this is the last vote that we need to get us there. Thank you very much.
Any other vote that can be heard? Well, you've already spoken. Mr. Johnson, you've spoken on this?
Greg Johnson, Precinct 3. I've heard a lot from all the previous speakers, they've all made some really good points, yea and nay, but the one thing, and I honestly don't know how I'm going to vote now, I really don't, but the one thing that we had put before us was, well, what are we looking to save here? $8, maybe $40 if we're to get some radical savings per, per year, per person, or per family? And they're talking about $400,000 to get us the answers that we all seem to have. That seems like a really big number, and it is. But it's also, if we're talking $8 to $40 per family, put that $400,000 in context, we're talking less than $20 to get those answers. So now, I guess, like the rest of you, I have to figure out, is this worth 20 bucks to figure out? Thanks.
Any other vote that can be heard?
Couple of quick comments, ladies and gentlemen. When we, I heard my new selectman say he was, had grave reservations about purchasing the water company during his campaign, and since he hasn't arisen to say anything, I would say he's been convinced in the last month to spend $400,000. If he hasn't, I'd like him to just explain his position. The other point would be, since we're expending $400,000 to work towards the purchase of the water company, in my layman's way, I believe this requires a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator.
To the previous gentleman's comments, that is exactly correct. Through my entire campaign, I talked about my concerns of purchasing the Milford Water Company. To Chairman Kincaid's point, the first night, my first meeting as a selectman, we had a letter of intent that we were going to sign, okay, and we had discussion about the water company. And I brought up a lot of valid questions. I said, I can't sign this letter. What about this? What about that? What about this? There's too many things that haven't been answered. And the Board of Selectmen all agreed that we couldn't sign that letter of intent because we fired too many questions that weren't answered yet. But we felt, as Mr. Moore spoke about, the only way that we're going to get those answers, these answers that we need, and again, tonight is about appropriating the funds that are needed to get me and all of you the answers to those questions, okay? And that, that's what tonight is about. I still have the same questions, sir, that I had when I ran for election. But it's been explained to me, and it's been proven to me, that the only way that I'm going to get those answers, so that I can give you, the taxpayers of this town, the accurate information you need, whether to buy the water company or not buy the water company, is to spend this $400,000, get the information that we need, have the public forums that we should have, and we're going to have plenty of them, okay? So that when we come back and we can take an accurate vote, that's what this article is about, so that we can get that information. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Yes, order in the back.
I would like to have the information that the selectman has, that $400,000, I'd rather have it known to me, what pipes are in the ground that has to be replaced, what do we have to spend before, I don't want, I want that information before to the town meeting that we're going to spend this. We want to know what pipes are there for 100 years that we have to replace, because I worked for the state, I dug up pipes that, a 12-inch pipe had about four inches to grow. I mean, I, I turned on the water in my house, and it's just barely getting water out from the tank. The pipes on that Congress Street has to be 100 years old. I'm interested, if I'm going to spend, how much money they're going to do, $400,000 to me is a risk that we should have to know what we buying before we know. I'm real nervous here speaking, and I'm not used to speaking before, even though I was on the planning board. I want to know in this, everyone who votes, I think you should vote for the $400,000 and find out what we buying before we do anything. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Edward Burdorally, Precinct 2. No one is going to mistake me for a big spender, okay? First of all. But the fact is, this process has been a long and complicated one, and this $400,000, I think, is essential to produce and pay, to get the final answers we need, to see if we do indeed want to buy the water company. And let's not lose sight of the fact that we're here talking about the water company. I'm a little confused tonight about the pristine nature of the water. Well, come to my house, and you're not going to see pristine water, and I live at the top of a hill, okay? There were grave problems with the management of the water company. There were before, there may well be now, okay? So we're here because of a crisis that occurred, and it, it opened the door to an investigation. When the water company sought that outrageous rate increase, and was brought to the DPU, someone might want to read the DPU study and see what they talked about the management of the water company. It wasn't that complimentary, but the great thing that that study did was it opened the gates to getting more and more information about the, the projects, the maps, the actual facilities, and the, the underpinning of the company. So I say, let's go the distance, let's do this so we can make the right decision when the time comes. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Mr. Consigli.
Dave Consigli, Chairman of the Zoning Board. Tonight, we voted, one of the articles, to have the Board of Selectmen represent this body on negotiations. I've been in enough longer and larger contracts on buildings in my life that part of the process is due diligence. Part of the due diligence is upfront expenses of money to determine what you can and can't do. Sometimes those numbers are larger, sometimes they're smaller. If you're building a giant office building, you better be ready and be sure of the ground you're buying, the due diligence that you're doing, and the cost it takes to do that section. Then you've got the architecturals. And architectural costs usually run about 10% or 15% of the cost of the construction of a facility. So when you take a look at this $400,000, think of everything. We gave them the authority through a vote tonight and last year to negotiate on our behalf privately, securely, and to bring it to this body. Part of what their request is the process of a proper decision, due diligence, and what it takes to get in front of you again. The determination is simple. Do you want to be proactive and be able to take this community to next step if we want it or we don't want this water company? We don't know. We don't have the answers. So the due diligence is still in process. Negotiations still continue privately, and none of us know what those are. So again, the $400,000 is part of the process to get answers. The question is, do you want to be proactive, or are we going to let this go and not come to the table again? That's what we need to determine, and the vote of the $400,000 does this. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Order up in the back there. Motion's been made to move the previous question and attempt to shut off debate, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question will rise and remain standing until counted All those opposed to moving the previous question will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1. Precinct 1, 17 in favor, 1 opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2, 16 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 3. Precinct 3, 21 in favor, 1 opposed. Precinct 4. Precinct 4, 19 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 5. Precinct 5, 13 in favor, 5 opposed. Precinct 6. 19 in favor, 4 opposed in Precinct 6. Precinct 7. Precinct 7, 17 in favor, 3 opposed. Precinct 8. Precinct 8, 18 in favor, 2 opposed. At large? At large, 6 in favor, 6 opposed. 146 having voted in favor, 22 in the negative. The question now comes upon the motion as presented, which is the town vote to transfer the sum of $400,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized together with funds available under Article 16 of the October 21, 2013 Annual Town, Special Town Meeting, thereafter supplemented for purposes of retaining consultants and other expert services to evaluate and represent the town's interest in acquisition of the Milford Water Company and to effectuate any final agreement to transfer the Milford Water Company and its assets to the town of Milford. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move the vote, to vote that the town discontinue as a public way, and in accordance with General Law, Section 82, or, I'm sorry, Chapter 82, Section 21, a portion of Park Terrace.
Motion's been made, and secondly, we waive the reading of the remainder of the article if it's exactly as appears in the warrant, is it?
It is, it is.
It is. Any vote that can be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Question is, motion is carried. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Refer to sponsor. Refer to sponsor. Selectman Buckley.
Some of you may be familiar with the, the area of Main Street and the former National Bank and Trust. This article would approve the application of Milford Downtown LLC, the owner of said property, as a public way, a 43-square-foot portion of Park Terrace. The intention is discontinu, or discontinuous to resolve a potential title issue that is a very small encroachment of the existing building of the road area. You recall that in October 2016 Town Meeting, Special Town Meeting members voted to approve and authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of land from Eight Park Terrace consisting of .142 acres, or 6,186 square feet, for which that land was gifted from this bank to be used by the Milford Police Department, which is being used today. The explanation I received in very layman terms was, we believe that through the expansion of that building, that bank building, and I say expansion, the use of brick on the exterior, that it encroached upon the property of, of the town. And to the best estimate somebody had, maybe sometime in the 30s or 40s. It doesn't change substantially the sidewalk, it doesn't change substantially the roadway, it doesn't, frankly, it doesn't change anything. What it says is, so that title can move on this property, that the existing building is, is understood to encroach, and we're waiving that. The approval of this article simply resolves a longstanding land, land issue on Park Terrace. Thank you, and I'd urge your support.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. Since part of the motion involves the authorization to transfer town land, requires a two-thirds vote, I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Motion's been made, and secondly, pass over Article 26. A motion to pass over is debatable and require, and if successful, we're taking no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. Any vote that can be heard in the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article 26. All in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion to pass over is carried unanimously. Article 27.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $135,000, said some to be used to pay for operating costs, regular maintenance, and repairs, as well as any other items needed to continue the operation of the former Middle School East Building.
Motion made, and second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $135,000, said some to be used to pay for operating costs, regular maintenance and repairs, as well as other items needed for the continued operation of the Middle School East Building. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote that can be heard? Selectman Walsh.
This article seeks to appropriate $135,000 to enable the town to continue with repairs or cover any costs that may be needed to the Middle School East Building. As you know, I stated early, on July 1, 2017, the school department has declared that building surplus and will turn it back to the town. These funds are needed to continue the upkeep and maintain that property until what is decided we are going to do with that property. I ask for your I ask for your support.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 28.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Clause 22G of Section 5 of Chapter 59 of the General Laws, which acceptance would allow property and trust to meet the ownership requirements for veterans exemptions and reduce the residency requirement from five years to one year.
Motion made, and second, the town vote to accept the provisions of Clause 22G of Section 5 of Chapter 59 of the General Laws, which acceptance would allow property and trust to meet the ownership requirements for veterans exemptions and reduce the residency requirement from five years to one year. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Jerry?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, this article does exactly what it says. The assessors proposed this and advocate for it, and the selectmen are in support of it. It gives a little more flexibility to veterans in terms of estate planning. Right now, the ownership and trust can preclude a person from getting a veteran's exemption. This one now will eliminate that, just as it says it will reduce the residency requirement for five years to one year. Just a piece of information, I just, if we had passed this, over the last two years, it would have cost $350. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 29.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote in accordance with the third paragraph of General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 3, to allow any balance remaining in account for the upkeep of town facility at the close of the fiscal year to remain in said account, to be expended for the upkeep and maintenance of such a facility under the control of a board, committee, or department of the town.
Motion made, and second, the town vote in accordance with the third paragraph of General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 3, to allow any balance remaining in an account for the upkeep of a town facility at the close of the fiscal year to remain in said account, to be expended for the upkeep and maintenance of such facility under the control of a board, committee, or department of the town. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote that can be heard? Sluckman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is an expansion of the current law, which allows us to use a revolving fund only for rental of surplus school properties. This will allow the timely upkeep and maintenance of any town rented property, such as Middle School East Building and Purchase Street School as examples. Thank you very much, and I'd urge your support.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 3.9.12, so that the title shall read "Temporary and Portable Signs," and further by adding the following sentence to Section 3.9.12.1. Notwithstanding the foregoing, each lot in such districts may at any time have one portable sign per lot, inclusive of other temporary or portable signs permitted herein.
Motion made, and second, the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 3.9.12, so that the title shall read "Temporary and Portable Signs," and further by adding the following sentence to Section 3.9.12.1. Notwithstanding the foregoing, each lot in such districts may at any time have one portable sign per lot, inclusive of other temporary or portable signs permitted herein. Does the Planning Board have a report?
Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on May 2, 2017, regarding the subject of Article 30, at which time it voted unanimously to make an unfavorable recommendation to Town Meeting. Article 30 is an application by petition to amend the zoning bylaw and seek to increase the number of temporary signs allowed in residential zones by adding portable signs to the title of Section 3912 Temporary Signs. It would also add language to subsection 3912.1 to allow one portable sign per lot in addition to all other permitted signs. Town Meeting adopted the current signed section of the zoning bylaw by unanimous vote in May of 2016. The purpose of the current regulation is in part to specifically avoid the prolific, excuse me, pro, pro chief. Thanks, buddy. Of signs and maintenance, and minimize their adverse effects on nearby public and private property, to enhance economic development in the aesthetics environment, and to encourage the effective use of signs. The proposed amendment works to cross-purpose at the newly adopted sign regulation, not only by introducing yet another sign type, but by increasing the number of signs being displayed in residential neighborhoods. The amount of sign clutter in Milford has been dramatically reduced since the adoption of the current regulation. This amendment would result in a reverse of that progress. Therefore, the Planning Board recommends Article 30 be denied. Thank you.
Mr. Soars.
Good evening. So, the intent of this bylaw, last year, we passed a sign bylaw that limited signs. We were told one sign per lot. What I don't believe this body understood was that the caveat to that bylaw was that that temporary sign must be for a one-time event. So, what was very popular over the last summer that ended up being illegal were all those we support, Milford Police signs. But not only those signs, but many other signs that we thought we would be able to legally display, and that's the key word, legal. Signs like, I must have passed at least six illegal signs coming down here. Signs like, drive like your kids live here. It's not a one-time event. It doesn't fall under the legal categorization. You know, signs that say, this home is secured by ADT. That is not a one-time event. So, this bylaw, the intent of this bylaw is to take the one-time event requirement away from the temporary signs and allow any lot, still one sign per lot, so that we can all display our signs. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 8. The Planning Board spent an inordinate amount of time reviewing and debating our sign bylaw, which was passed at our last Town Meeting. Finally, we have some control over the garbage signs that were placed all over our town. Approval of this article will be taking a giant step backwards on the progress we've made in cleaning up the town. We can't be changing our bylaw just because somebody refuses to comply with the current bylaw. Please, don't let us revert back to the proliferation of garbage signs that were placed all over the town. Thank you. Please vote no on this article.
Any other vote that can be heard? In the back there. Person in the back. Please identify yourself and...
Hi, I'm Carolyn Khan. I am not a Town Meeting Member, but I am a registered voter. I live at 42 South Main Street. I'm here about the signs tonight. The sign clause that has been added as of last year has caused a significant negative impact on the arts community here in Milford, Massachusetts. I am a member of the Greater Milford Community Chorus. I'm a volunteer with the Coughlin Hill Symphony Orchestra. I am a lifelong member of several theater companies, and I am a supporter of M-PAC. All these organizations this year have had a terrible impact with getting attendance at any of the performances. That is because we have not been allowed to put up signs. Even the small, even trying to put a small sign up in a front yard, we've been met with being told to take them down, that they were cluttering up the neighborhoods. Without being able to do any publicity, we're not going to be able to have these organizations continue. The Milford Community Chorus is a community use program. If we can't have signs, why are we even being, why is the town even considering us a community program? We really need, we really need this, help with this. We really need this to be changed. And we need, and if you really do like the arts, and you like the arts in our community, we need help, we need, we need the, sorry, I'm a little nervous. We just need to have a little more leeway with the signs and where we can put them. Most of the, most of the groups would put them up about two weeks before the performance, and they'd be done within two days after the performance. We are not cluttering, we are not leaving them up, and I see way more yard sale signs up at all times than we ever saw of any of the performance ones. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. On May 18, 2015, a zoning bylaw was defeated at that Town Meeting. On May 26, 2016, the Town Meeting approved new sign regulations. I attended the public hearing of the Planning Board on May 2 of this year. It took a year of diligent work, research, by the members of the Planning Board, of Town Council Moody, and the Town Planner, Mr. Duncan, to propose and to present to the May 23, 2016, new regulations of the zoning bylaw as to signs, location, length of time of temporary signs that could be displayed. I have witnessed, all over town, a cleanup of many of these signs that if you are, all right, I'll give you an example. You go down by the big Y that was Hanaford, and whether you're going to Midway or you're going to Holliston, and you have signs on the elevated platforms, you can't read them because I'm concentrating on that terrible intersection. The same thing on South Main Street. Signs that are put up, knocked over by the wind, the printing is so small, you can't read it, but if you stop and try to read it, you could get killed. Have you been on South, tried to go on South Main Street and then go on to Cape Road? You can't read these signs. There are signs now right up at Tank Field for yard sales, and if you're not the first car stopped at that Fountain Street, Conger Street, West Fountain Street intersection, you cannot read the signs. I understand why the previous speaker, I know how she feels. I feel that way when I go to Mass and I say, boy, we really don't have too many people here anymore. I think all organizations are feeling the pinch. But you have Instagram, you have local television, you have notices going through schools that tell you of certain events that are going to be held in the town. The purpose of the sign regulation is that, the purpose is really to improve our environment, to encourage the effective use of signs, and to enable fair and consistent enforcement by adopting content-neutral regulations. That last stipulation was a ruling in June of 2015 by the Supreme Court. Please defeat this article because I believe that it's important for, for all of us not to see just this mess of signs that people put up, and people do not take them down. And I have no, please, this is no disrespect to, I support the Milford Police Department. We all love our town. But whoever originated, the signs were so well-intended, had, excuse me, his intentions were well-founded. But all they had to do was call the Milford Building Inspection Department and ask, am I allowed to give out these signs, and is it legal for them to be placed? And if you have any question about any banners, any signs, please, just call the Building Inspection, Inspector's Department, and they will give you the answer. Please vote against this. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? The gentleman in the way back there.
Brian Cole, Precinct 8. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My understanding of the existing bylaws is that signs for special events, as mentioned earlier, choral performances, plays, and the like, should be allowed because they're one-time events. If that's not the case, then maybe someone's taking legal signs down, and we should absolutely look into that. I don't know who would do that, I'm pretty new, but that's not right either. We don't want to over-enforce these bylaws. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Mr. Visconti. Mr. Visconti.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti, town meeting member from Precinct 8. Just for clarification purposes and to follow up on the previous speaker's comments, signs advertising a one-time event are allowed under our current bylaw, and if we defeat this article, it will not affect the ability to place signs advertising one-time events. I'm not sure who was telling the, one of the previous speakers that those signs were not allowed. They are allowed under our current bylaw, and I believe, unless I'm mistaken, they can be put up, I believe it's 45 days prior to the event, with the stipulation that they be taken down 72 hours after the event. Those signs are allowed under our current bylaw and will still be allowed if this article is defeated. Please defeat this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Now, Coria, Precinct 5. I'm hearing a lot of different things about signs. I have one sign in my yard. I'm proud of it. There are men and women who risk their lives every day so I can live in Milford comfortably. And for me to say I support the local police makes me proud. When we've had people come into Milford, I've heard over and over that they notice those signs, that we support our police department. Why would you take that away from me? Why would you not let me say that I'm proud of the way our police behave? All I read in the newspapers is all bad things that other police departments do. Nobody ever talks about the good. This is Milford. We've always been proud of our police. I don't understand why, one sign. Now, I agree with the previous speaker saying I can't put 15 signs in my yard and have all this stuff, but one sign saying thank you to the people who risked their lives for me and my family? Seriously, what's wrong with one little sign to say thank you? I urge you to keep it.
Any other, any other vote to be heard? Yes, the voter, Precinct 6.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Just trying to clear up some things, one-time events are allowed. In terms of putting one sign that somebody likes or has, they can actually do that if they make that a permanent sign. You're allowed a permanent sign. The problem is, we're making judgments on what somebody puts as a sign and what it says. The planning board couldn't do that. It's, it has to be sign-neutral. So the fact that you may like one person's sign or not, you may not like it if someone puts a sign out next to you that reads something totally different, but if you go ahead and vote this, then that means they can put that type of sign out there. So you have the opportunity in the bylaw, you can have a permanent sign by meeting the bylaw requirements for a permanent sign, you have the right to do that. What the, what the planning board was trying to do, as addressed by a number of people here, is to try to stop the proliferation of signs and also to try to make sure that those signs that seem to find our way into other people's yards, and, and out into the streets and things like that, those types of signs, temporary signs, are not ones that are going to be up there for long periods of time. We did them for one-time events so that people could put them up before the event, and then take them down after that. I urge you to defeat this article.
Any other vote to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Josh Leach, Precinct 6. I am the gentleman responsible for the Milford Police Signs. So, not looking, not looking for that. I did it, for whatever reasons I did it for, but I did speak with the office, the Building Inspector's Office, Building Commissioner's Office, and we did ask to make sure that those signs were going to be within regulation. And I believe, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was within a certain size, it would be okay. And I was actually going to call, and then the person who helped with the signs, Karen Mullen at Signs, plus urged that we call to make sure that we were within a specific sign size. So if they weren't, we certainly would have changed them, but to find out that they weren't, or maybe they're, maybe I'm wrong, maybe they are allowed, but I'd love to find out because we did try to make sure that we stayed within that size regulation so that everyone could enjoy them. So I'd love a little bit more clarification if there's a size regulation or size restriction. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Visconti, one more time. Mr. Visconti from Precinct 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti, town meeting member from Precinct 8. Support your local police. You do not support your local police by placing a lousy sign in your yard. You support your local police by your actions. How many of you have been driving down the street with maybe your children or your grandchildren in your car, and came upon a police officer, and turned to your child or grandchild and said, "See that person in uniform? That person is our friend. Wave to our friend and give him or he or she a thumbs up." That is how you support your local police department, not by placing a lousy sign in your yard. A sign means nothing, takes money to buy whiskey. Thank you. Please defeat this article.
Motion to move the previous question attempt to shut off to be requires a two-thirds vote, is not debatable. All those in favor of moving the previous question rise and remain standing until counted All those opposed to moving the previous question rise and remain standing until counted Precinct 1. Precinct 1, 14 in favor, 3 opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2, 15 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 3. I'm sorry, once again. 22 in favor, 1 opposed. Precinct 4. Precinct 4, 19 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 5. 15 in favor, 2 opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6, 22 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 7. 17 in favor, 3 opposed. And Precinct 7. Precinct 8. I'm sorry, how many opposed, Lou? 1 opposed. At large. 152 in, in favor, 14 opposed. The motion to move the previous question is carried. Question now comes upon the motion as presented, which was to see if the town will, or to move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 3.9.12 so that the title shall read "Temporary Importable Signs," and further by adding the following sentence in Section 3.9.12.1. "Now, notwithstanding the foregoing, each lot in such districts may at any time have one portable sign per lot, inclusive of other temporary or portable signs permitted herein, herein." All those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1. 5 in favor, 12 opposed. Precinct 2. Precinct 2, 9 in favor, 4 opposed. Precinct 3. Precinct 3, 10 in favor, 13 opposed. Precinct 4. Precinct 4, 8 in favor, 8 opposed. Precinct 5. Precinct 5, 10 in favor, 7 opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6, 9 in favor, 12 opposed. Precinct 7. Precinct 7, 5 in favor, 12 opposed. Precinct 8. Precinct 8, 9 in favor, 8 opposed. At large. 76 having voted in favor, 79 opposed. The necessary two-thirds has not been acquired, therefore the motion is defeated. Article 31.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 of the available balance and fund 2696 Comcast Verizon PEG Access Account for the purpose of performing upgrades in accordance with the PEG Access agreements with the town.
Motion made and second the town vote to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 of the available balance and fund 2696 Comcast Verizon PEG Access Account for the purpose of performing upgrades in accordance with the PEG Access Agreement with the town. Finance Committee?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation. Mr. Marias.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a small local access fee that's added to your cable bill each month. A portion of that fee is then passed on to the schools, and it's used to support local access channels as well as video production capabilities. I ask for your support.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to establish a special stabilization fund for the purpose of reserving funds to pay expenses related to special education as authorized by General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Motion made and second the town vote to establish a special stabilization fund for the purpose of reserving funds to pay expenses related to special education as authorized by General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Any vote to be heard, Mr. Marias?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the more volatile expenses that the school district has to manage are expenses associated with special education. There was a bill that was passed in late 2016 that would allow school districts to establish a reserve fund to pay for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education out of district tuition or transportation. We're not asking for any funds at this time, but simply asking for your support to establish the account.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 33. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows.
Motion made and second eliminate the reading of the remainder of the article if it's exactly as appears in the warrant, is it, Jerry? It is? Any vote to be heard on the motion to dispense? On the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Question now comes upon the motion. Yes, Mr. Pettenary.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Ernie Pettenary. I'm a lawyer here in Milford. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the proposal that is embodied in Article 33. Article 33 asks this body's permission to file a home rule petition with the state legislature for the purpose of authorizing the issuance of an additional pouring license for alcoholic beverages in the town of Milford. The premises that are sought to be licensed are located at 198 East Main Street, formerly the Truffles Restaurant. Truffles, as you might know, has closed a while ago, and when it closed, the license did not stay with the building, but in fact is now required, the owners of the building and the proponent of this article are required to get another license. Because of the archaic licensing rules that were established in Massachusetts over 100 years ago, you might remember that towns and cities in the state of Massachusetts are obligated to observe quotas based on population. To exceed the quota, there has to be a special legislative action taken. We've done this a couple of times before with the permission of this body, and in those instances, we've had cooperation by the unanimous consent of the state legislature, and we believe that that would happen in this case as well. The person who seeks to be running the restaurant at 198 East Main Street is a gentleman of impeccable credentials. He's a person who's got over 30 years of experience in the restaurant industry. He was the host and maître d' at many restaurants down in the Rhode Island area, in fact was the maître d' of the famous Capriccio's Restaurant, and he's currently a successful restaurateur in Uxbridge. In order to allow this building to be reoccupied and a business to come back into Milford, which would offer fine dining at family prices, we need your permission to ask the state of Massachusetts for this legislation. A couple of hours ago, this body unanimously approved Articles 15 and 16, and in those articles, the town proposed that it could regulate its speed limits better than the state mandated guidelines. It's a fairly common perception currently that the state of Massachusetts has less ability than the localities to govern the things which affect the localities most directly. In this case, it's the number of pouring licenses available for alcoholic beverages. To its credit, the Baker Administration has recently proposed that the elimination of quotas would be one of its goals for liquor license applications. Until that happens, we're forced to come before you and ask for your assistance in getting the 198 East Main Street relicensed. And the one good thing about these home rule petitions is that if in fact your vote is successfully obtained and the legislation is successfully granted, that license will stay with that building and can only be utilized in connection with it. I want to especially thank the Board of Selectmen for cooperating in this enterprise. They, like a lot of people affected by these questions, recognize the sensitive nature of preserving the locality's right in making decisions for the locality, and we're here tonight to ask you your support to that end as well. Thank you.
Is any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw related to marijuana establishments as noted hereafter.
It is. Motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the article if it's exactly as appears in the warrant, it is? No changes?
No, sir.
Any vote to be heard on the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the planning board have a report?
Yes. Pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 40. Pursuant to master law, chapter forty-eight, section five, the planning board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on May second, 2017 regarding the subject of article thirty-four, at which time it voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article thirty-four is an application by the planning board to amend the zoning bylaws providing and regulating marijuana establishments. The planning board recommends the adoption of article thirty-four as printed in the warrant. Article thirty-four of the May twentieth, two, 2017 annual town meeting warrant is a planning board-sponsored zoning amendment related to marijuana establishments. Specifically, article thirty-four provides a new definition for marijuana establishments as a marijuana, excuse me, marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other marijuana-related businesses, but not to include a medical marijuana treatment center. The amendment also provides for marijuana establishments as of right within the commercial C and all three industrial zoning districts. It provides for such uses generally within the CB commercial zones, but only by special permit. In addition, article thirty-four would further limit marijuana establishments within the CB and CC commercial zones to retail sales only, and would prohibit a marijuana establishment altogether within the downtown CA commercial zone. The planning board urges the adoption of article thirty-four as it's in the warrant. Thank you.
Is any vote that can be heard? Yes. Mr. Sandborn? Sorry? Slides? Okay, can you use that?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, my name is Bill Sandborn from precinct two. Thank you for the floor. When I read the town meeting warrant about article thirty-four, it got me interested because it was confusing about the different zoning terms and what they actually meant. So I did a little bit of research, and I put together a couple of slides, and I was surprised by what I learned. So I wanted to pass this information on to you so that everyone else will be more informed. As the previous speaker talked, the article thirty-four defines marijuana establishments as including marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, product manufacturers, and marijuana retailers. Any other marijuana-related business except medical and marijuana treatment centers. So that's the, those are the points. If you then put together a map of Milford with all of the different zoning that was mentioned here, the point here of interest is that the town, this map shows in different colors all the areas in the town where the recreational marijuana businesses can be located if the planning board's proposal is approved by our town meeting. The various colors are not important, they're just there to show the five different zones involved. And the important takeaway is that with the zoning language proposed by article thirty-four as it is, recreational marijuana businesses can be located within almost every area that is colored on this map. Note that the areas not colored, that are either white or gray, are strictly residential zones where no kind of business could be located anyway. The bottom line is the wording of this proposal opens up every industrial and commercial zone in town to the recreational marijuana businesses that I showed you on the first visual. That area is a significant amount of, you know, area in the town, and includes almost every major road, Route one oh nine, sixteen, eighty-five, one forty, the Sumner Street, Dilla Street, Central Street, Beaver Street, East Main Street. This is significant. These areas where recreational marijuana businesses could be located also includes every major shopping center in Milford. This includes the Lowe's, Target, the previous Kmart, Kohl's, Big Y, Stop &amp; Shop, Shaw's. I must acknowledge, however, that there is a single tiny exception, which is the central commercial area on Main Street from the Tua Toria eighty-nine restaurant and Spalones up to the police station. The rest of Main Street from Sacred Heart Church to Spalones and from the police station to Frank's Appliance is also open to these businesses. Another way of thinking about the possible impacts of this almost unrestricted zoning controls is a quick look at some of our treasured landmarks around town. The Plains Neighborhood. Fortune Boulevard Shopping Areas. Route one oh nine Shopping District. Stop &amp; Shop. Even some of our areas like in the church area with Sacred Heart. So in closing, I want to thank the planning board members for taking the initiative to get the zoning regulations in place. It's a good start to the process, but this proposal leaves Milford almost wide open for the manufacturing, distribution, and retail sale of recreational marijuana products. I urge you as responsible town meeting members to vote no on this zoning bylaw proposal and instead ask our officials to take a harder look at these restrictions and perhaps bring this back for a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Is any other vote that can be heard? Yes, Mr. Crowley.
Ladies and gentlemen, obviously very similar in terms of the signed bylaw, the planning board looks at this as no different other entity in terms of retail or perhaps manufacturing, so on and so forth, because regrettably, that's how we have to look at this. This has now been passed, and it's an acceptable, non, no longer illegal type of business. So yes, when we look at areas similar to where he pointed out perhaps levers, in theory, you could perhaps put a retail establishment there, but the trigger is you need a special permit. In terms of the outer areas, when we look at Lowe's and Kmart and areas like that, the former Big D, if you will, those are allowable in terms of retail and/or perhaps manufacturing. And again, how you look at this is how you look at it. It's now a legal business. So I'm not here to get into the legality of whether it should have or should not have passed. The reality of it is it did in the state of Massachusetts, so we have a legal responsibility or a duty to this town to lay out an area which, again, a legalized use can permit. Thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Schwimer.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Schwimer. I'm from precinct seven. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I would like to voice my strong concerns in regard to article thirty-four as it is presented here tonight. I am deeply concerned about its minimally restrictive plan of where recreational marijuana can be processed, tested, and sold in our community. Let me be clear, I have no objection to the well-regulated sale of medical marijuana. I support its role and the compassionate care of people who find relief of their symptoms due to serious illness. However, the list of surrounding communities that have taken definitive action to ban the sale of recreational marijuana in their towns continues to grow daily. I am very concerned such potential liberal access to purchase recreational marijuana in our town will result in Milford becoming by default the pot shop destination for area communities and beyond. Therefore, I recommend more restrictive zoning for recreational marijuana businesses in Milford. It is very important to understand thoughtful consideration to create a more restrictive plan for the retail sale of recreational marijuana is not intended to, nor would it, infringe on anyone's personal liberties to possess, use, or grow recreational marijuana as allowed by the current state law. Finally, the FINCOM stated in their comments about this article, the thought of not allowing these stores downtown was the planning board wanted to maintain a certain degree of integrity in downtown. Also, FINCOM stated that clients would use up limited parking, and they would go, they would go to these stores regardless of where they are located. I certainly agree with those valid points made by the FINCOM. However, I ask you, should we not be more, more concerned with the integrity of our entire community? If folks are willing to drive to purchase recreational marijuana, is it truly necessary for us to permit such stores to be located so close to our children's schools, to our parks, to our library, to our youth center, to the shopping plazas where we buy groceries and clothing for our children, and near the restaurants where we dine with our family and friends? I urge you to vote no on article thirty-four as it's presented here tonight. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Yes, Mr. Trettl. Mr. Trettl.
I appreciate the very clear and thoughtful presentation Bill Sandborn made, and sure things, put things into perspective for me, I think. As town meeting members, I believe we shouldn't take this zoning proposal as the finished product, especially given the better understanding and issues raised by the previous speakers. I'm prepared to vote no because I believe a no vote in these discussions that we're having now will give the planning board a better perspective and guidelines on what Milford citizens want, which is tighter restrictions on where medical, recreational marijuana can be processed, distributed, retailed in this town. So I urge you to vote no so the planning board can consider tighter restrictions.
Any other vote that can be heard? Mr. Burns?
John Burns, town meeting member, precinct one. This is a very difficult question to deal with. At least on the surface, it appears to be a difficult question to deal with. I have to remind everybody who is in attendance here that back on November the eighth of two thousand and sixteen, there was a question on the statewide ballot, question four, which asked the residents of the Commonwealth of Massa, of Massachusetts, do you favor the legalization of marijuana for recreational use with a retail component? The answer to that question was, on the statewide basis, nearly sixty percent of the people voted yes. Here at Milford, that question was answered definitively in a yes fashion to the tune of about a five-hundred-vote plurality. That meant that more people in Milford wanted this question to be dealt with the way in which that they answered it, that yes, they wanted it to be legalized for recreational purposes, and yes, they wanted a retail component part of this. That's what that they have asked. Almost from the very moment that this question was answered on the statewide ballot and answered here in Milford, there have been all kinds of efforts to derail the wishes of the electorate. I remind you, I remind everyone, that if we, the voters of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, are smart enough and sophisticated enough to vote for our governor, butted-governor, attorney general, our state legislators, our local leaders of any rank, whoever we are, I think we are smart enough and sophisticated enough to say yes or no to the legalization of marijuana and also its retail component part. There may very well come a point in time when we will look at marijuana essentially as we look at alcohol, the sales of alcohol. I will remind you that there are still a lot of people in our society who are very much against alcohol, but that has not stopped us from having alcoholic licenses in this town and in the state. It has not stopped us. This has never been in my lifetime what you would call a dry town. I can recall years ago when Hope Deal was called a dry town. What if our alcohol was sold in Hope Deal in the dark hours because it was shipped in in the dark hours? But it was a dry town. Dry towns don't necessarily work very well. To put all kinds of restrictions upon how this shall be dealt with, it's not going to work any better. It's going to be worse. What we're trying to do in this question is to eliminate the black market that goes on with, has gone on with marijuana for way too long. May I remind everyone that until sometime in the nineteen thirties, marijuana was as legal as anything. Sometime in the nineteen thirties, early forties, it became illegal. It hasn't stopped people from using marijuana. It didn't work. Prohibition has never, ever worked in our American society. Understand it. It It has never worked, and it never will work. And it all goes back to what happened many, many millennia ago over the issue of that apple. From that time forward, we learned that there is no such thing as prohibition working. Let's try to make this as doable and workable as possible. Just because people in Westboro voted the way that they did didn't mean that it was necessarily the smartest vote. It may not have been. But what, we in Milford have always been very sane and sensible people. I think we can do this one very sane and very sensibly as well. Let's vote for this question as presented. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Buckley.
Since the state voted on this referendum, boards across the Commonwealth struggle to identify what the right community standards are. I don't think anybody here is talking about prohibition. But understanding what the community wants, where they want things, is part of what zoning does, the same way we zone alcohol or talk about restrictions on alcohol. There are restrictions on alcohol for age limits, so I don't think anybody here is talking about restrictions or prohibition specifically. I think what you have is a planning board looking to put in a zoning and not having a clear understanding of where the community might want it. They know from their boards and they know from their hearings, but the only way to ratify a zoning article is to bring it to this body. Now, I for one personally was not in favor, and this is not something new, said it at the planning board hearing, was not in favor of all the zones that allow recreational marijuana to be sold. I wasn't in favor of next to Olivas, I wasn't in favor of next to Gene's, I wasn't in favor of Main Street minus the area between Totori Eighty-Nine and the police station. Right now, the way this article is written, medical marijuana is far more regulated and zoned in fewer places than recreational marijuana. Medical marijuana requires a two-hundred-foot setback from a residence, from a church, from a school, from the youth center. This does not require that. I think it has problems, but I respect the planning board's desire to get a planning article out there so they can understand what this body thinks and feels. Otherwise, they have no barometer on the community standard. And so, it's for that purpose, Mr. Moderator, I would offer a motion to amend Article Thirty-Four The motion I'm proposing mirrors medical marijuana, makes it no more restrictive, no less restrictive. I move at the town vote to amend the main motion under Article Thirty-Four by adding the following proposed footnote. No marijuana retailer shall be located within two hundred feet of a residential zone, dwelling unit, school, place of worship, church, park, playground, or youth center. Measurements to determine the two-hundred-foot separation shall be taken from property lines. Where a portion of the lot is within the required separation, the entire lot shall be considered to be within the required separation. I'd ask that we start small. I'd ask you to support this amendment and make it at least as restrictive as medical marijuana, make recreational marijuana, give it some confines, give it some bounds, and start easy. Thank you very much.
Mr. Buckley has moved to amend the motion by, under Article Thirty-Four, by adding the following to the proposed footnote Twenty-Nine. No marijuana retailer shall be located within two hundred feet of a residential zone, dwelling unit, school, place of worship, church, park, playground, or youth center. Measurements to determine the two-hundred-foot separation shall be taken from property lines. And where a portion of the lot is within the required separation, the entire lot shall be considered to be within the required separation. So, what we're now discussing is his amendment to the motion, not the entire motion itself, but just this amendment. Is any voter care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Consigli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, Dave Consigli, Milford Zoning Board. I commend the planning board for bringing this forward, and clearly, the zoning board has already been in deep depth with hearings concerning the medical side of aspects. Recently, we just denied a medical marijuana facility located near Coles, which was close to the residential zone within two hundred feet, and clearly, the entire zoning board had a big issue with that location. Saying that, it did not preclude the decision to come back or amend it at some point in time, but what would happen if, now that they did get licensed at that location, would they skirt and be quicker to get the retail component of the license?
Okay, David, I've just got to get you back on the amendment to the motion, which is to add-
So, in any event, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, in any event, the amendment, I believe, actually does what I think everybody is looking for it to do, and that is to keep the same guidelines that currently we have under the medical marijuana side, and also the special permit process with that. So, I recommend a favorable recommendation on the amendment.
Any other voter care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? We're only talking about Mr. Buckley's amendment to the motion. We're not talking about the entire motion. Yes, the gentleman, not Mr. Visconti this time.
I rise to support the selectman's amendment. There is a ancient political philosophy, it's called subsidiarity. It's practiced, or it has been practiced historically, for instance, by the Catholic Church, and the principle is that decisions which affect a local area should be made locally. A very important concept. And we've heard this concept praised tonight with the speed limits, with the granting of a liquor license. Let us make this determination. And I think these restrictions are important. And to say simply that, "Well, it was voted on, and now it's the law of the land," mistakes can be made. The rubber is now hitting the road, and we have to make these decisions. And I've got two words for you, just because it's legal, and those two words are strip clubs. We can regulate those, we can regulate them tightly, I'd say we do the same thing here. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Yes, Mr. Visconti.
Ladies and gentlemen, Town Meeting Members, my name is Mike Visconti, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eight. I also support the amendment to the motion. I believe that, as some of the previous speakers have said, the state has voted to legalize retail sales, it is the law. With the amendment to the motion, I believe that will help satisfy all of the pros and cons of this ultimate motion. Keeping in mind that I believe there are plans for a referendum vote in the near future, and I hope that, I hope that happens, so that the residents of Milford, separate from a statewide vote, can once again vote definitively, do they want to allow retail sales of marijuana in Milford? If that vote is passed and the residents of Milford decide, "Yes, we do want to allow it," then I believe it's important that we already have a zoning article, a zoning amendment, a zoning law in place outlining where these establishments can be placed, so that when people go to the polls to vote on this referendum, they know exactly what they are going to be voting for and where these establishments can be placed. That will, that will help, help them make an informed decision, knowing what they're voting for, when this referendum ultimately comes to fruition, and I hope it does. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? On the amendment to the motion, Mr. Johnson. Talking about the amendment presented by Mr. Buckley, not the entire motion.
Greg Johnson, Precinct Three. So, the motion is, is an interesting one, and it seems totally in character with, with the way this body has gone. But the previous speaker had two words for us, I have two more, "local bars." We just, in the previous article, expanded the realm of a local bar. So, what is our mission here? I mean, are we hypocritical or what? I mean, seriously, we've just said we want more flexibility in bars. The law is already established, although the state has yet to get its act in gear, and the will of the people has already been determined in this town. They say by only five hundred votes it passed. I remind you that one of our selectmen only passed by less than two hundred votes. I mean, yes, there are paper-thin margins around here, but we've had this vote, we've settled this, and as a matter of, to the actual speaking of this amendment, as a patient myself, this is horrific. We are treating this like, like I'm going to a strip club. I'm not going to a strip club. I'm going to CVS. My goodness. There is, right next to a church in this town, we have a methadone clinic. Where's the restriction on the zoning on that? We have bars all over. The most recent dispensary that was gun-opened got shot down because of, I'm not exactly sure why. It's right next to a bar, two doors down. Are you kidding me? If anybody here tells me their first drug wasn't their granddaddy's beer, or their mama's beer, or their daddy's beer, you're full of it, or you haven't tried anything yet. But my point is, is that we need to be consistent about this. We're opening ourselves up, I think, to legal issues because we have one way of treating alcohol versus strip clubs, which don't even make sense to do that, versus regular clinics, versus opioid clinics. So, the restriction here, while it's interesting and well-intended, the problem is, is that it's trying to parody something that is also bad. I mean, two hundred feet from a property line, that was the exact same logic we used on the strip club thing, and that's fine, if you don't like that, that's fine. So, I can see why you'd like this, but I remind you, the will of the people, however paper-thin or not, was already determined. So, let's defeat this and the larger motion, because hello, it's the twenty-first century, and the people have spoken on this.
Any other voter care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? The amendment to the motion? Yes, the voter way in the back there, the woman, not you, Mr. Trettle.
Kim Smith, Precinct Three. I'll keep it short because I know we're all exhausted, but I don't think we're talking about prohibition here. All we're talking about is trying to put some limits on this, and as a mom, I would love to have some limits on how close these recreational marijuana retailers are to schools. So, please consider supporting this amendment for that very reason. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Bertarelli?
Moving the question.
Moving the question on the amendment to the motion, all right? We're just talking about the amendment to the motion, which is to add, Mr. Buckley's amendment, which is that you're adding to the proposed footnote Twenty-Nine, if you look at the motion as you have it in front of you, we're adding the following. After the phrase in "not to include a medical marijuana treatment center," Twenty-Nine, it would say, "No marijuana retailer shall be located within two hundred feet of a residential zone, dwelling unit, school, place of worship, church, park, playground, or youth center. Measurements to determine the two-hundred-feet separation shall be taken from property lines. Where a portion of the lot is within required separation, the entire lot shall be considered to be within the required separation." So, now we're voting on moving the question relative to this amendment only. I'll take a voice vote on the question of moving this, moving the question on the amendment. If it's not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of moving the question on the amendment to the motion manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All those in favor of moving the question rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed to moving the question rise and remain standing until counted by Precinct One.
Seventeen in favor.
Precinct One, seventeen in favor, none opposed. Precinct Two?
Fourteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct Two, fourteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Three?
Twenty-one in favor, none opposed.
Precinct Three, twenty-one in favor, two opposed. Precinct Four?
Sixteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct Four, sixteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Five?
Thirteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct Five, thirteen in favor, three opposed. Excuse me, Precinct Six?
Nineteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct Six, nineteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct Seven?
Twenty in favor, none opposed.
Precinct Seven, twenty in favor, none opposed. Precinct Eight?
Eighteen in favor, none opposed.
At large?
Thirteen in favor, none opposed.
Four, five, six, seven? One hundred fifty-one, having voted in the affirmative, seven in the negative. The motion to move the previous question relative to the amendment has succeeded. So, now, we're voting only on the amendment to the motion, which is a majority vote. It's just a majority vote on the amendment to the motion, which is to add, to amend the main motion under Article Thirty-Four by adding the following to the proposed footnote Twenty-Nine. No marijuana retailer shall be located within two hundred feet of a residential zone, dwelling unit, school, place of worship, church, park, playground, or youth center. Measurements to determine the two-hundred-foot separation shall be taken from property lines. Where a portion of the lot is within the required separation, the entire lot shall be considered to be within the required separation. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion to amend is carried. Now, we'll discuss the motion as amended, which is the motion that was presented by the planning board together with the amendment to the motion presented by Selectman Buckley. Any voter care to be heard?
Aye.
Yes. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. Brian Cole, from Precinct Eight. The discussion about banning or restricting recreational marijuana sales has emphasized that even if those sales are restricted or banned, people will still be allowed to have plants for personal use. It seems to me that by tightly restricting recreational marijuana sales, we'll actually be creating a Wild West atmosphere with no control over who uses it or when. Some of us are concerned about underage use, but who's more likely to sell to teenagers? A legal reseller, whose license and business depends on compliance with the law, or an individual taking advantage of a lack of legal sellers to abuse their personal use exemption? Some of us are concerned about marijuana's addictive- Some of us are concerned about marijuana's addictive properties. But taking opioids as an analog, how much are pharmaceutical companies contributing to community programs to treat addiction as opposed to illegal sellers? Some of us are concerned about the strength of the products for sale. But who's better incentivized to control the quality and purity of their product? A legal reseller, whose reputation depends on their customers having positive experiences? Or an individual selling under the table to people they know? Before I wrap up, I just want to say one more thing. I am not connected in any way, shape, or form to the marijuana industry. I don't use marijuana. I have friends, neighbors, and uncles who do. It's a different crowd, right? But I do support recreational marijuana. I have, I have not seen any studies that show the long-term effects of marijuana are even as dangerous as alcohol, which is highly addictive, which causes long-term brain, liver, and blood pressure problems, is responsible for some 30,000 deaths every year in this country, and is freely available all over the place. 60% of Americans now support legalization of marijuana. And I hope Milford and Massachusetts can set an example with rational, evidence-based regulations that balance personal freedom with community responsibility. And therefore, I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? A woman in the back wants to address the meeting. Yeah, I believe it's Ms. or Mrs. Leoni. I understand that you're not a resident of the town of Milford. You're a resident of the town of Hope Dale, but I understand that you've addressed the Board of Selectmen, and since you're not a resident of the town of Milford, you would require the unanimous consent of the body to address the meeting. Is there anyone objecting to her addressing the meeting for no more than five minutes? Okay, therefore, I'll allow you to address the meeting for no more than five minutes.
My name is Amy Leoni, and I am a substance abuse counselor here in the town of Milford. And I am here tonight to support the amendment for the recreational sale of marijuana. And I think that limiting these shops, that they could be open within many of the town borders, and limiting it to what we have said today is probably the best thing, because it will keep it away from the renovated Milford Youth Center, the schools, and our residents. And as Mr. Buckley had said, focusing small and being more restrictive is probably the best way to start in doing many things. And as an expert in this field of substance abuse, addiction, treatment, and someone who has worked very hard over the last 10 years to really increase the awareness and change the community norms around substance use and abuse, I personally had felt and spoke at the Board of Selectmen's meeting that this original article was contradictory to our town's efforts regarding substance use, and which we have embraced over the last 10 years, and especially over this year, with the Substance Abuse Navigation Program that we supply treatment for those who are impacted by the opioid overdoses. And from my experience, I can tell you that of all the opioid addicts that I work with, they never started by picking up opiates. It all began by smoking weed in the woods recreationally. Then, it progressed to bigger and better things. And for those that don't think that this is a stepping stone drug, you're gravely mistaken. It is a drug that has bridged your youth from one drug to another. As a town, we have, I have valid concerns about the availability of this product in our, in the town of Milford. Personally, I believe that marijuana, as is said before, poses many health risks, and allowing it, the legal sale of recreation will make it easier for the children to obtain, and creating more problems for us as a community. We are all, we are all should be concerned about the impact to the family dynamics and to the youth in our town. We are not a community that actively promotes sales and the use of drugs. So why, so I ask everybody, why should we embrace this now? So I would hope that you will all support the amendment to this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard?
Chris LaVelli, precinct four. I was prepared to support the original article, but what we have in it now is what I consider to be a poison pill. The medical marijuana zoning bylaw was designed to keep any dispensary from going in anywhere in the town of Milford. And that's exactly what this amendment has done too, is to prevent any type of legal marijuana to be sold or manufactured. And that would include hemp and rope, which are made, you can make wonderful fabric out of marijuana plants. The best rope, best natural rope fiber that exists is made from that. But, quite frankly, we have an excellent hospital, and we prevented a marijuana dispensary from going next to the only regional cancer treatment center, which was the logical place to put a marijuana dispensary for medical marijuana. And now we're going to look at also trying to apply the same ban. We should let the zoning board, who did a good job, and remember, it required a special permit, still, which meant any abutters could come and very easily try to derail the issue. We aren't going to see a marijuana dispensary next to a hospital with the restrictions that the zoning board put in place. Yeah, and if you want to look at putting restrictions, why don't we put the same restrictions that we have for a tavern, where it can be located next, in terms of proximity to residences, churches, youth centers? The 200-foot property line to property line restriction means we're not going to have any type of business selling any type, whether it be medical, or recreational, or products that you, that have nothing to do with smoking or eating marijuana, sold in this town, or done in this town. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard?
The, the scope of the points of view and the discussion, a sort of revelation about age, the advantages and disadvantages of old age, young age, or whatever, and there's a couple of people come up and given some very intelligent, sort of elegant solutions as to why this is entrepreneurial, why it's this, why it's that. The point is, I've lived in Milford long enough and been a town meeting member 29 years, to realize that Milford has some unique demographic problems and other issues. And the last thing we want to become, given what the reality is going to seem to be, is that most of the towns around us are going to pass an ordinance banning the sale of marijuana. It's a fact. It's happening all around us. If this ordinance, as it is, were to, were to stay unrestricted with the planning board, we'd be basically becoming a, a retail center for basically Worcester County, parts of Middlesex County, and parts of Norfolk County, to come here and buy marijuana. I really don't want Milford to become a dumping ground for another problem. And I don't want to have to have our police force and our fire force and all of our people deal with the problems of this and teles from people who are coming to our town. We have a difficult enough situation with overdoses in the community now, and the, the effect it has on the people who do it, on the policemen, the firemen, and their families, without, without this continuing. To do this in, in, in absence of the reality that we're going to have in the towns all around us is, is really irresponsible. So I'd urge you to, to vote for this, for this amendment with, with restrictions that the Selectman Buckley has put in. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
First off, I'd like to say that I went to the planning board hearing, and Chairman Caneli did a really nice job, explained to me the tough situation that they're in, because I was on the defensive. And he made it very clear to me that they're in a tough situation, and they, they had to pass, you know, lay it out the way they did. But what I have a problem with, and the way, reason I commend the Selectman Buckley for his amendment is, you just spent millions of dollars to renovate a youth center, to keep children safe, to give them an environment to get into, or they have people like Amy that they can talk to when they're having issues during the day they can't understand. And we're going to allow a medical, retail shop to be somewhere around the youth center? I feel as an elected official, I have a responsibility to protect the town, to protect you, to protect your children. So we would allow facilities to go around our schools? That makes no sense at all. And I heard the gentleman over here talk about the closest place to have one would be down by the Dana Fiber Cancer Research Center. We just spent $75 million renovating a hospital. Is that the kind of environment that we want to have next to that?
Yes.
No? Well, I don't. I don't. I, I agree. I, it has to be restricted. I don't know, we have to put restrictions on it. And that's what we're asking you to do. We're not saying no. We're asking you to put the restrictions so they go into certain areas, so that our children are safe, our schools are safe, our youth center is safe. That's what we're asking. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard?
Greg Johnson, precinct three. You all know how I feel about this, but we've heard a lot of things here, and, and obviously a lot of good intentions, and I get that. That's, that's why we're here, and it's good. To debate this is awesome, and I've never shut down a debate yet on any of y'all. But, there is a law of unintended consequences thing going on here too. Everything you say sounds really good. But, you know what? Before question four passed, we were still talking about how much of our kids have access to drugs in schools already. This was before last fall. The problem's already there. The previous speaker, a previous speaker, mentioned how we could bring this into the light. And like I said before, as a patient, none of this affects me, so do what we will, and whatever. It's just, it's wrong. And one thing I've noticed, as a patient though, is just like any food product, there's a label. It tells you what's in it. I can make responsible decisions. I don't buy crazy, stupid, strong stuff. But it's just, who does that? Well, some people do that. A lot of people do that. And I think that's where a lot of people are thinking's going on out here. And you're creating a scenario where you're, you're trying to protect yourself against a situation that we're not talking about here. I mean, we don't have a problem with alcohol being two doors down from a place that we apparently do have a problem with medical, or excuse me, just marijuana being sold. We somehow don't think a clinic should be next to a hospital, or a dispensary next to either of those. I don't know where that logic comes from. You put the patients next to the doctors, and the pharmacists next to the doctors, that all makes sense. So, that's why I had the problem with the original amendment. But now that that's passed, I, so, you know, I find myself sort of in strange bedfells, but some people said, "Let's vote no for this. Let the planning board sift it through, maybe rejigger it like we do with signs." Took over a year to get the signs right. I'm not saying there's not something to do here, but it definitely ought to be rejiggered. Because we are talking about, you know, like I said before, this is something that's already passed. The state has already determined, this is not illegal behavior now, like it or not. It is legal behavior. And if you don't feel that way, and you say, "Oh, you know, that's not right, I don't agree," unfortunately, that's not the way the rest of the state rolled, including this town, by whatever margin. So I urge that we knock this down, but again, it's, it's the unintended, or law of unintended consequences. Y'all mean well, but the kids already have access to the drugs. They just don't know what's in it. Not at all. Whether it's a gummy that's going to drive them crazy, like a professional football player can't even handle that stuff. That stuff's already on the road. So, we can do something about it, or we can pretend that we're doing something about it, and let the problem just persist. Defeat this. Rework it, and we'll come back.
Any other voter here to be heard?
Jamie, you'll get your chance. I think the article as amended is a good compromise for everyone. It says at least restricted as much as the medical marijuana was, which this body, again, was the first, we were the first town in the Commonwealth to support and come up with zoning for the medical marijuana, which we do have a, a plant here in Milford, pretty successful, pretty impressive. I just had a tour recently with all of this coming up. I think that, you know, a lot of people comparing the two, and that's the only reason I bring that up, I think people see the retail, obviously, as, as very different, and there's obviously concerns. I think that's why the article as amended will put a lot of that to hopefully rest. We start small, and we can always come back. This body has corrected things when they felt differently. So again, I think, you know, this is a good opportunity to, to take the compromise, and hopefully we can see how that is and revisit it if we have to. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to marijuana establishments as noted here and after. By adding in Article Four definitions, a definition for marijuana establishments as follows. Marijuana establishments: a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other marijuana-related business, but not to include a medical marijuana treatment center. And by adding in Section 2.3 Use Regulation Schedule, a reference to marijuana establishments as follows. Section 2.3 Use Regulation Schedule, the activity of use, other principal uses, the marijuana establishments, so the footnote one, RA zero, RA not permitted, RB, RC, RD, OR, BPCA, CBS, special permit, CCP, footnote's 29, IA, IB, and IC with P permitted. The 29 footnote would say marijuana retailer only, but not to include a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, or other marijuana-related business, and not to include a medical marijuana treatment center. No, period, no marijuana retailer shall be located within 200 feet of a residential zone, dwelling unit, school, place of worship, church, park, playground, or youth center. Measurements to determine the 200-foot separation shall be taken from property lines. Where a portion of the lot is within required separation, the entire lot shall be considered to be within the required separation. Since this is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All, all those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one? Precinct one, 12 in favor, two opposed. Precinct two?
15 in favor, one opposed.
15 in favor, one opposed. Precinct three? Precinct three, 20 in favor, three opposed. Precinct four? Precinct four, 13 in favor, three opposed. Precinct five? Precinct five, 13 in favor, three opposed. Precinct six? Precinct six, 17 in favor, two opposed. Precinct seven? Precinct seven, 18 in favor, one opposed. Precinct eight? Precinct eight, 17 in favor, none opposed. At large? At large, 14 in favor, none opposed. 139 having voted in the affirmative, 15 in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired, and the motion has been passed. The motion has been passed. Article thirty-five? Chief?
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to revoke its acceptance of the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws placing the Town of Milford Police Department under Civil Service Law, General Laws, Chapter Thirty-One, which civil service status was accepted by a vote of the nineteen-twenty-five Annual Town Meeting. And further, such revocation of acceptance in accordance with General Laws, Chapter Four, Section Four-B, Paragraph E, not, not to affect the civil service rights of any employee of the Milford Police Department entitled thereto prior to vote under this article.
Motion being seconded that the town vote to revoke its acceptance of the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws placing the Town of Milford Police Department under Civil Service Laws, General Laws, Chapter Thirty-One, which civil service status was accepted by vote of the nineteen-twenty-five Annual Town Meeting. And further, such revocation of acceptance in accordance with General Laws, Chapter Four, Section Four-B-E, not to be affect, not to affect the civil service rights of any employee of the Milford Police Department entitled thereto prior to vote under this article. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation, first of all?
Favorable.
Favorable. Chief Olafle.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, what we're requesting is that town meeting support to remove the Milford Police Department from civil service. We are following the lead of other communities who are not in the civil service system any longer. Most of our neighboring communities, but just to name a few in this area, Holliston, Hopkinton, Upton, Hope Dale, Franklin, Mendon, Uxbridge, Norwood, Wellesley, Northborough, Westwood, Marlborough, Westborough, and most recently Framingham. In fact, two-thirds of the towns in the Commonwealth have left civil service. The civil service process, we rely solely on the exam score as the primary determiner within preference groups that were established by the state. And hiring and promotions were restricted to two names on the list plus one for every vacancy. It's the barest minimum of qualifications, high school diploma or GED, driver's license, and you have to be between the ages of twenty-one and thirty-two. You take the exam in the spring, we won't see a list for eight to twelve months. The list is only good for two years. So we can do better. We placed on each of your seats the process for promotions and hiring that was developed in concert with the Police Association, the Board of Selectmen, Town Council. You'll note when you look at it that the process that we're putting into place not only has the examination, so it has a certifiable written examination, but it also, we take a look at residency. So someone that resides in the community or resided here previously, who has knowledge of the community. Military service. Are they graduates of the police academy? So they're already certified. Significant savings for the community. Do they have experience as a police officer? Language abilities, higher education. We're requiring a minimum of an associate's degree to serve as a police officer in this community. Do they have service with the Milford Police Department as a public safety dispatcher or auxiliary police officer? Thus, they understand how the department operates and what the expectations are as they serve the community. And we can also look at other skills and abilities that we believe would benefit the police department and the residents of this community. Likewise, in looking at promotions, not relying solely on a written examination, there's the score, that's it. We're taking a look at performance evaluations. What's the work performance of that individual? What's their sick leave record? What's their education, training, disciplinary history, and their work ethic? In moving away from civil service, we're not held to many of the restrictions that civil service has had in place since the vote in nineteen-twenty-five. For instance, the age cap restriction. I cannot hire someone that's reached the age of thirty-two years. That prevents us from considering people with a vast amount of real-world experience who want to now go into criminal justice. As mentioned in the motion, so what is the impact on the officers that are in the department presently and those supervisors? As stated in the article, the general laws require us to leave those people in their civil service status unless they get promoted. Newly hired officers would not be in the civil service. All of the protections that you see under the civil service law are within the police union contract. So even the new hires are losing nothing. It's, it's, it mirrors, and that happened over the years because there's advantages to using the arbitration process as opposed to civil service. Removing police officials from civil service is not new to this community. I'm the first non-civil service chief fifteen years ago. Deputy chief's position, when it was created by this town meeting, is non-civil service. Within the next five years, and this is one of the important factors in looking at this as well, within the next five years, we will replace nineteen police officials in this community as a result of retirements. Nineteen. The cost, we, we have trained auxiliary police officers in meeting the standards of the state through the full-time police academy, only to see them go to our neighboring communities to serve as police officers. Because of the restrictions of the civil service process, they're never going to be hired here. Young people that grew up here, they know this community like the back of their hand. Families are here and they're working in neighboring communities, and we sponsored them through the training. What's the value in bringing some of those young people back? And trust me, they'll be knocking on the door. It's a significant savings. Each one of those people, if you project the nineteen, you're looking at a savings, a cost savings that's going to come to this town meeting over those five years of two million dollars. Because under the present system, civil service, I hire, they go to an academy for twenty-eight weeks, I pay them full-time while they're in the academy. And I'm filling the vacancy here in Milford on overtime. When they come out of the academy, if it's people that aren't from Milford, I now have to teach them streets, teach them neighborhoods, teach them how we operate versus a dispatcher or an auxiliary police officer who grew up here and, and has been with us for years and appreciates all of that. We can do a condensed field training. So it's a significant savings on, on that side of it as well. I believe that when all is said and done, you're going to get a better product. And that's not to discredit any of the offices that are here. They will say the same thing to you. They've said it overwhelmingly. And, and the Association President, Robbie Tassino, is here tonight, and I know he is going to speak to you about this. So you have the support of the police officers themselves. I ask you for your support, frankly, for the future of the Milford Police Department, and I urge you to vote favorably on this article. Thank you.
Does any other vote to be heard? I'm sorry? Well, the last vote that we had was significantly over the court. The court was one-twenty-six. Any other vote to be heard? I'm sorry? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you to those remaining members that are still here. I, I don't know if I should go home and not drink my water and not eat chicken anymore, but I don't know. My name is Robert Tassino. I live at High Street in Milford. I'm a registered voter. Thank you, every one of you, for your service. I know what it's like to be in public service, so thank you for staying the course tonight and all the work that you guys and gals have done. Real quickly, it's also my honor, my privilege to be the union president of the local mascot two-eighteen. That's your union, that is your frontline officers and your frontline supervisors, so i.e. patrolmen and sergeants. So first, I want to start off real quick about talking about all the good things that civil service is and has done for us. Okay, moving on. Nineteen-twenty-five, I, I looked these, these facts up. I'm sorry, they did bread by the pound. It was nine cents. Coffee, a pound of coffee was fifty cents, and bacon was forty-seven cents. I just want to go back there for a day and fill my car with bacon. The real issue here is nineteen-twenty-five, sure, civil service made sense. What they had made sense because there was no system. They didn't have a system. So they came up with civil service, and it worked, and it worked for a long time. I'm here to tell you now, it is a broken system, okay? It is a broken system, and it is civil service's failure to change with the times. You are no longer left with a pool of the best and the brightest. And I'm a civil service, by the way. But the current structure of civil service does not fit the needs of policing. Across the country, across this great nation, police are under siege. For the sometimes tasks that we're faced to make these quick decisions, you want the best and the brightest. And I promise you, the best and the brightest are aching to come here. I worked many years with a police officer, one of the greatest translators and a far better police officer than I. And he would come in this town of Milford, and he would help me day in and day out, help you day in and day out. He's not a cop from this community. He had to come in mutual aid from another town, a non-civil service town. And it was okay for us, it was okay for everybody here, to take his knowledge, his experience, his linguistic skills, if I'm correct, our three languages fluently and testably fluent, because him and I have been to court many times. But at the end of the day, he couldn't get a job here, and that's all he wanted. So we didn't win in that situation. Also, the current situation you have with promotions. I'm the field training officer. I have a young man or woman who is qualified with their minimum education, they go through the police academy, and they're a good candidate. They come here and they ride with me because I'm the FTO. And during this time, I rate this candidate as fair, but need supervision. And over that remaining how many months when they're not with me, they are supervised. And at the end of the supervision, they have this brainstorm, I'm going to take the civil service test, because they only had to be a cop for a year to get promoted. One year. And guess what? On that fateful day, this young gal or guy scores one point higher than me, and at the end of it, he or she is one point higher than me. And guess what I'm calling that person the next day? Boss. Tell me that makes sense. That's the reality of the system you're in. The system that we worked with the chief, we worked with the selectmen and town council, and I want to thank them for that publicly. Jerry, thank you. And thank you, guys, for the hard work we put in to come up with this new process. This did not happen overnight. This new process is not only time-tested by other agencies, it is the best system that we believe for the town of Milford and for our employees and for our future employees of this union. Before I urge your support of this, I'm going to close with, Mr. Visconti, I believe, left, but I want to close with quoting him. When we were talking about sign Article Thirty, he said, do something to support your police. Well, this is that something. I urge your support. And a gentleman over here, and I liked what you said, sir, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, I think it was Precinct One, he said, quote, "We here in Milford are sane and sensible." And I agree with that. I think it was you, sir. We are sane and sensible, and for that reason, I urge you to be sane and sensible and support this article for us. Help us move forward in the future of this department. Thank you. Any other vote to be heard? Yes, Mr. Bissler. Sir Bissler.
Hi, Russell Bissler, Precinct Three. Chief, notwithstanding your comments about the two million dollars that you're going to be saving, what's the cost? We're going from the civil service exam, we're going to have assessment centers, we're going to have preparations for the exams, we're going to have all these extra guys who are going to be making money on the overtime of the assessment. What is the cost to the town? Is it in your budget now? Is there going to be another appropriation for the next town meeting? I heard no numbers. Two million dollars is good, having people who know the town is good. I know you have to pay the guys when they go to the school, you have to hire a guy to cover for them. That's fine. You're going to have to do that anyway now, going to school. If not, I want to know the numbers. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Chief?
The cost for the academy for someone that we sponsor, there is no cost. They pay. The cost as far as examinations under this process and no different than examinations on civil service. Presently, you want to take the police exam, you pay the state to take the exam. You want to take an exam to be promoted, you pay the state to take the exam. Likewise, in all of the communities that I mentioned, they have a process just like we put before you. The applicants pay. They pay to take those exams. So all the exam, people that do assessment centers and do the examination itself, it's all paid by the applicants.
Any other vote to be heard? Yes, the other lady.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Jessica Pika, Precinct Five. I thought I could give a nice example of, thank you, I could, thought I could give an example of a candidate that would fall into this category. So my husband is currently thirty-four, he just celebrated his thirty-fourth birthday. He served seven years in the Army. He did two tours in Iraq, one in Iraq, one in Afghanistan, excuse me. He is now a federal police officer. He's undergone millions of dollars of training through the Army and through the federal government. However, this restriction or this current law as it is now would prevent, or civil service would prevent him from getting a job within the Milford Police Department, somewhere where he grew up. He's, he was born here, he's lived here his entire life, and he would not be able to serve his community. So I wanted to give an example to, to you all, to show you that there are people out there that have experience, that are, you know, very good candidates that we could have in our community, someone who knows the community, who knows the streets, who knows the neighborhoods, someone who knows the fellow police officers that they would be working with and serving with. So I ask that you think about this before you cast your vote and support the chief in, in this amendment. So thank you very much.
Any other vote to be heard? Go back there, yes. Are you a town meeting member? Sorry? You're a resident, you reside at?
Yes, Precinct Four.
Okay, just identify yourself.
My name is Stephanie Raze. I am a registered voter from Precinct Four. My name is Stephanie Raze. I'm a registered voter from Precinct Four. I pretty much grew up here in Milford, and I know our police, some of our police officers, including the gentleman that spoke, he actually helped my sister when she was pregnant. And I would like to say that the police have a good interaction with the town members. And the thing is, the one thing I'm questioning about this is, would it only be our local or would anyone be able to come? Because I believe we do need to, I believe it's fifteen positions available in the next five years from retirement, and I want to make sure that it's people from our local community and not just someone else, like you said, someone that was trained here and then left. So my whole question is, what is the guarantee that it's going to be local people and not someone, say, from Worcester or, say, from Sherborne that's going to be coming to our town? Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Any other vote to be heard? Yes, Mr. Buck.
The previous speaker's questions were good questions, and the Board of Selectmen's deliberation in supporting the police union and the police chief in this process and the entire department is that it made it far more likely that it may be somebody local. It doesn't preclude somebody from outside who's a It doesn't preclude somebody from outside who's a better candidate from stepping up and taking the position, should the review process allow for that. But it does make it far more likely that somebody with local roots, knowing the community, and frankly, being known to the Police Department and the school systems and all that, would get a shot at a local job.
Any other vote again to be heard? Mr. Burns.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, John Burns, Precinct One. I rise to support the essence of this article. I think it is important that we do bring about some reforms. My only concern, and one of the prior speakers alluded to her husband having served in the military, served very effectively in the military, and thank him for his service to this country. I will tell you that as the godfather of a wonderful godson who served two tours of duty in Afghanistan, one of the things that I have been very, very concerned about down through the years has been the fact that it has become increasingly difficult for a lot of our returning veterans to get jobs in the private sector and in the public sector. I want to make sure that those who have put their lives on the line in behalf of me and all of us, this community and this great country, are given some degree of priority in terms of their hiring as a member of the Police Department or the Fire Department or any other department. If somehow, someway, that they meet some very real requisite qualifications, I certainly want them to get some priority, some priority in terms of their hiring. There used to be a phrase that was applied to those who came back from serving in World War Two, it may have even gone back to World War One. A grateful nation. A grateful nation saying to the men and women who served this country in World War One, World War Two, Korea, Vietnam, when you come back, you're going to be taken care of by your people back home, by us. That's one of my real concerns. I have no problem with the current chief. I think he's going to, he's going to do everything the right way. It might be his successor that I might have a problem with, I hope not. But I am very, very concerned that our men and women who are coming back after having served, my godson served two tours of duty in Afghanistan, he came back, he's an honorably discharged MP sergeant. He should certainly be given a priority status in terms of being hired by just about any police department in this state or in this country. That's what I want to assure here. That's all I want to assure here. A sense of real fairness to the men and women who have done so much for you and so very, very much for me. A grateful nation says thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion that the town vote to revoke its acceptance of the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws placing the Town of Milford Police Department under Civil Service Law, General Laws, Chapter Thirty-One, which civil service status was accepted by vote of the nineteen twenty-five Annual Town Meeting. And further, such revocation of acceptance in accordance with General Laws, Chapter Four, Four B.E., not to affect the civil service rights of any employee of the Milford Police Department entitled thereto prior to vote under this article. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. What I might also, if anyone's interested in the history of the town of Milford, is an excellent article by Robert Sinadella, A Lesson in Civics, and he talks about the nineteen twenty-five town meeting that accepted civil service. And at that time, we had two police chiefs, we had two, we had an election for a selectman, there was a recount, there was a vote of the town meeting to accept civil service. The case went to the Supreme Court of Massachusetts. This is a story by a thirteen-year-old getting involved in politics, and it's an excellent lesson in civics. Robert Sinadella, I recommend it highly, and it's appropriate. They had the state police coming into this auditorium as people were rushing the moderator to move the question or whatever, and it was a horrible town meeting back in nineteen twenty-five. But anyway, Article Thirty-Six. We'll have coffee tomorrow morning. Article Thirty-Six.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature for special legislation to authorize appointed water commissioners in Milford, which legislation will provide substantially as follows.
Motion made and seconded. We dispense with the reading of the remainder of the article, it's exactly as it appeared in the warrant, Mr. Kincaid, yes, it is. Any vote again to be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the Finance Committee have recommendation?
Favorable.
Mr. Kincaid.
Thank you, sir. I know, we're all getting tired. This article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature for special legislation to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a three-person Board of Water Commissioners and be empowered for them to act as Board of Water Commissioners. The Board of Water Commissioners also may establish an employment contract with a water department manager. This legislation will be necessary should the town purchase the water company. So quite simply, if, when that question does come before this board and you folks do vote to move on acquiring the water company, if that does come to you, we would have to be ready on day one to manage. Thank you. I ask for your support.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Thirty-Seven. Mr. Marius. The voter has doubted the quorum, that being the case, we'll have the monitors please take attendance in their precinct. Seven present. Precinct Two. Precinct Three. Nineteen present. Precinct Four. Eleven present. Precinct Five. Thirteen present. Precinct Six. Fourteen present. Precinct Seven. Sixteen present. Precinct Eight. Thirteen present. At large. Sixteen present. the necessary number is one hundred and twenty-six. So therefore, we do not have a quorum to continue with the rest of the, rest of the warrant. So what is the pleasure of the meeting? Adhere until tomorrow night, Wednesday night, two weeks from tonight? I need, I need a motion. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn Thursday night.
Let's all, I'm sorry, Jerry. All right, the motion is to adjourn until Wednesday night at seven-thirty. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjuring until Wednesday at seven-thirty manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried.